Chairman McCann, it is six o'clock and we can start the meeting anytime from now.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of San Clemente on today, June 7th, 2023. I call this meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Steve Kemp, who was recently reappointed.
All right.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
Here.
Chair Pro Tim Kemp.
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove.
Here.
And Chair McCann.
Here. Thank you. We have no special orders of business, the minutes from the meeting of May 17th. Do I have a motion or any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 17.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Okay. Commissioner McCocken and Davies abstaining. Item passes five to zero. Thank you. We're all in written communications. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak tonight on anything that is not scheduled to be on the agenda? Seeing none? Moving on. Yes?
We have these two at our base.
Would you suggest that maybe we cover those in the item?
I agree.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on, consent calendar, item 7A. Do we have an approval of a recommendation motion for the consent calendar or does anyone want to pull it?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Do we, I apologize. Do we have any public comments on that?
We have no speaker cards. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on item 7A, which is the parking, oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. It's parking modification on South El Camino Real and Avenida San Luis Rey.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we reconsider the item so we can reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
But first of all, first of all, it's got to be pulled.
Right, but we just reconsidered. Now we can pull it.
So make a motion to pull.
We're going to hear you. We're doing some formalities so that we can hear what you have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we remove 7A from the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to discuss and consider item 7A, which is parking modification South El Camino Real and Avenida San Luis Rey. I know, so do we make this a public hearing? Because members of the public would like to speak.
This is a public meeting and so you can take public comment and we typically would. We also have staff that can answer questions or provide a presentation. I recommend that we run this like we would any other item on tonight's agenda.
Absolutely. Do I formally open a public hearing or just say we're now inviting comments from the public? Since it wasn't scheduled as a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing matter, but it is, you would just consider it. So if you want to, do you want staff to first present any information on it or you can go ask for public comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Staff.
This is not, was not designated as a quote unquote "public" hearing, which is just a formality. We absolutely want to hear from every member of the public that wants to speak on this item and we will. So I'm opening it as an item on the consent calendar for public consideration. So with that said, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair, we do have a presentation that we can share. So I'm going to ask Ryan Kim, our senior traffic engineer, to join me up here and he'll be able to present information on this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ryan Kim, Senior Traffic Engineer. Tonight I will be giving a brief presentations related to the South El Camino Real and Avenida San Luis Rey for forwarding staff's recommendations to City Council. As shown in the location map with the existing conditions, our team conducted a study on the parking restrictions near the intersection of El Camino Real and San Luis Rey where Primo Grocery Store and the San Luis Rey Park are located. We found that an existing condition that parking in, not allowed in El Camino Real between Santa Inez and San Luis Rey per traffic code. However, the north section of the block has an 80-foot-long red curve while the rest of the segment had served as on-street parking spaces for several years, which I'm talking about this San Luis Rey, I mean, excuse me, South El Camino Real, south of the San Luis Rey part, I'm talking about here. We have a 24-minute parking zone on the south side of the San Luis Rey between El Camino Real and Alley behind the Primo from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. On the south side of the San Luis Rey between El Camino Real and Alley, we have 24-minute parkings allowed in this section. Also, there are no parking signs on both sides of the Alley we're talking about here, behind the Primo. And within 300 feet north of the Primo, city has 33 public parking spaces available at San Luis Rey Park from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. In the northeast corner, we have public parking spaces for the San Luis Rey Park. The issue is Primo wants to modify parking restrictions to accommodate more customers while the resident wants to improve traffic and pedestrian safety in this area. Our goal is to improve safety and efficiency of traffic, meet residents' and businesses' needs, and report findings and recommendations on parking restrictions changes. As shown is a proposed measures to improve traffic flow and parking availability in this area by reducing red curb zones on the eastern side of El Camino Real, south of the San Luis Rey from existing 80 feet to the 50 feet and installing 60-foot-long green curve with 20-minute parking zones from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And reducing the parking limits on the southern side of the San Luis Rey from 24 minutes to 20 minutes here, consistent with the other side of streets. And installing 40-foot-long red curve at the northeast corner of the Gaiadele Comercial and the San Luis Rey. We're talking about the northeast corner of the red curve here. Also, prior to this meeting, we have already requested work orders to repaint faded red curve on the San Luis Rey here in the corner of the southeast corner of the San Luis Rey and El Camino Real intersection. And to place public parking signs along the street to inform the available parking spaces at San Luis Rey Park. So we are already requested work order to install our city public parking signs here and the other at the entrance of the public parking spaces. And lastly, to install the "No Parking in Alley" sign on the current sign post to prevent any blockage of the Alley behind the Primo. The sign should be facing the south to the, so that northbound drivers can see clearly. We are talking about these signs. We're going to install additional "No Parking Alley" sign and facing south. I'm ready to answer questions.
Thank you. Does any of the commission have any questions?
Okay, a couple things. This is definitely a needed place to address all the parking issues. I drove through there today and it's packed. Couple things. On the east side of El Camino Real, south of, south of that street, we're suggesting to, south of San Luis Rey, we're suggesting a 50-foot. What's required? Is OCFA requiring us to have any red there? Can we paint it all green? Why is there red at all? First. Is that an option?
Yes, because we have an upcoming bicycle project along this El Camino Real. So because this is a signal intersection, we need transition segments, at least 50 feet long.
Okay.
For no parking.
I understand. Okay, and then in addition to that, on the next slide, where you're painting, you're adding red right there on San Luis Rey and Del.
Here.
Comercial, yes.
Yes.
Why aren't we putting red on the other side? Because when I see on the other side of the street, I drove by today, people are parking right there also, just right, and they're really blinding that right-hand turn onto San Luis Rey. They're blinding every, why aren't we putting red there? Or is that an option?
Because this is pedestrian ramps. We don't put the red curb on front of the pedestrian ramps. So but in the, conversely, this corner, northeast corner, we don't have any pedestrian ramp, no sidewalks. But people see parking there. So it, we have side distance issues, visibility issues, so I prevent that.
Yeah, that northwest corner is a problem too.
But additional corners, we need police, I mean, parking enforcement.
Yeah. Okay.
Instead of the red curves.
Okay.
You can get a citation for parking across a curb cut, ADA, because it's ADA.
I understand.
They can, they should.
I think that's, that's good for me. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, other questions for staff?
I've got a question.
Okay, please.
I noticed on exhibit, the work order improvements.
You will absolutely get a chance to talk. Right now, we're, the commissioners are asking questions of staff.
I noticed you're adding public parking signs. So that's to indicate that public parking is allowed. Is it normally allowed where there's no sign? I mean, why, why would you add a new sign to indicate parking that's already allowed?
Yes, we just want to show, at least inform to the, any visitors in this area who may not know that we have available parking spaces in the, near the parking, San Luis Park area, instead of the, parked illegally in the corner of the streets, double parking.
Yeah, but there's a lot of places in town where you can park. We don't put public parking.
This is a direction to a parking lot.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So it's not indicating that there's parking on the street there.
No.
It's just pointing to the parking lot.
And it's right there.
Correcting.
It's very, it's very convenient. It's right there.
With the arrow. Parking, probably parking with the arrow signs, so.
Don't you think that people that are going to that park will kind of go up there and park in the park parking lot as it is? I mean, is that necessary, that sign? Signs, signs everywhere, signs, you know? Like, is that sign necessary?
Well, at least we need, I, we, this, we decided to, we, it's better to have it instead of with nothing. And this is also consistent sign types that are citywide.
But my perception is that it's, it's not for, that sign isn't for the people that are going to the park anyway, that are going to use that parking lot anyway. It's to direct people that want to run into Primo or parking that vicinity and it's full. Hey, you can go half a block down here and you can get in that parking lot.
This, this particular business is located in an area that's near the San Mateo campgrounds. So they have a lot of visitors from the campgrounds that are out of town. And that's what creates a lot of the concern for the parking, because you have people who don't know the area, just trying to get in, so they'll park wherever. And I think what the staff is trying to do here is relieve some of that confusion from visitors and give them some direction for, you know, because they're from out of town. Park here. Go walk a little bit. Don't park, park over there. I think that's what's going. Mr. Kim, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And if I could add, I, several months ago, I drove by there and the red had parking in it. People were parking in the red. And yet, the parking spaces in the San Luis Rey parking lot were empty. And it's just a two, not even a two-minute walk. It's right there.
Do you have a question, Commissioner Kemp?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Now, we would love to hear from all interested members of the public.
I don't understand. I don't know your procedure, so I apologize.
We have special procedures. So hang on just one second. You have three minutes to talk. We're going to turn on the green, yellow, red. When it goes yellow, you have one minute left. Or if you're concerned about your time, you know, keep it on your phone. Mr. John Anderson.
Yes. 106 Avenida San Luis Rey. I grew up in San Clemente, born here in 1976, retired Marine. This was my dream to come back home and retire. And this restaurant has turned my dream into a complete nightmare. The. The parking is completely inadequate. Who, I gotta ask, who approved a restaurant with zero parking available?
So, this is not a Q and A? We're, we're open to hearing your comments.
All right, well, that, that's a question that needs to be addressed, and I'll move on. But that's a question that needs to be addressed, because there's zero parking available. And the only parking available is for the park, San Luis Rey Park, not for the restaurant. You guys are like doing euphemisms about, oh, we can change this, we can change that. I pull in and out of my driveway, it's almost a wreck every single day of the week. I don't have, I should not have to live that way. Nobody should. And, and then, more importantly, here's my biggest concern. Forget about the fact that I get hassled pulling into my garage. Somebody's gonna get killed, because, and then more importantly, it's gonna be a little kid that's riding an e-bike, or that is on a, on a golf cart, or whatever, because there's mass confusion there. You need, the first step, and I'll come back on the twentieth, but you need the first step to have traffic enforcement be there during peak hours, which is between eleven and thirteen hundred, sorry, I'm a Marine, eleven and one o'clock, and five PM and eight PM, on a daily basis, to see the chaos that is that street. I mean, I, I've been there since 2012, and it's just, it's totally blown up. And somebody needs to address why a restaurant was designated in that spot when there's zero parking, zero parking. The parking is provided by the city, and so you guys should be charging Primos for that parking, because guess what? It's almost entirely used by Primos customers. And I like, I like the business. I know the owners. It's great business, it's great things, it's good stuff. I'm a capitalist, I'm all about it, but however, comma, this was a really, really, really bad decision, it's gonna end in tragedy. That's pretty much all I got. And that, that whole diagram you guys did, that's a joke. I, I lived there, I know it. That is not adequate. You've got to figure something out. And I don't know what the solution is, but I'm willing to help with the solution, but that is not at all gonna be adequate. None, zero, zip, period, dot. And the reason, going back, you guys are probably too young to know, give me thirty seconds. In, in the nineteen eighties, the reason why there's a, a street light in that intersection is because a little kid got killed crossing the street. Go back and check your records, because I know it to be true, in the nineteen eighties. And the same thing is gonna happen. So, do you want that travesty on your books? Giddy up.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
May I add a...
Actually, Mr. Anderson, I actually have a question for you, if you don't mind. We certainly heard what you say, what you have to say, okay? My question to you is, these proposed changes that, that are being proposed here...
They won't work.
But...
They won't make, they won't make a difference, is what I'm saying. I'm telling you, living there, they won't make a, they won't make any sort of difference. The problem is...
Will they make it worse? It's my, in your opinion?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to do more analysis on that, to be honest with you, and I'm more than happy to do that. I'm more than happy to give you my opinion after I look at it in more detail, but I just know that, like, the biggest, I, I can go out and show you.
Sure, please.
Problem with making this green, the reason why it's red is because the bus comes over and it needs all the space. It takes up the entire space to make that turn.
It's not gonna be green.
It's not gonna be green.
We're not, we're not, we're not changing that at all.
It's on the other side.
Go, go back to the other slide, please, if you can.
I'll, I'll go back, yeah.
Those are the only changes we're proposing, that are being proposed.
Put the ones in the circle.
Well, that, that's, wait, all right, let me get oriented, sorry. Well, that's same spot. This area that's red, if you make that green, I mean, yeah, these, those need to be Marine red, because the bus comes this way. This would be good. Red is good there. All right, I'm just looking at it first time.
Okay.
I'll give you guys, I'll give you guys a much more detailed feedback. The other thing I would recommend along this line, along San Luis Rey, is that you make it like a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. I know that's gonna get the state involved, probably a little bit more complicated, I don't know. But at least, if you had a slower speed limit, people would slow down, because, like I said, my, my biggest concern is kids on e-bikes and golf carts and all this stuff and mass confusion.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate it.
If you give me, if you give me, I'll, I can report back and, 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 thorough analysis.
So, we're gonna discuss, you know, what we recommend here, or, or don't recommend, but my real question was, which you answered, is what's being proposed, is it gonna make anything worse? We, we don't think, we don't pretend to think that we're solving the world's problems with this action tonight, but, you know, is it gonna be materially...
No, it's not gonna get worse, it's just not gonna make it worse.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Sorry, I'm a little bit...
No problem. Okay, we also received a written email that I'll read. It's from Mike Paquette. He says, "I'm in support of parking modifications south El Camino Real and San Luis Rey. Hello, I am a resident at 103 Avenue to San Luis Rey, and I fully support this. My parking, parking spot is blocked on a regular basis with people parking on that corner overnight and while visiting Primos. Our parking is set up in a way that we basically have to hop over the curb you're proposing to avoid paint, to propose, you're proposing to paint red in order to access our parking spots. It has caused me to be late to work on several occasions and is a massive inconvenience, so much so that we've considered painting this red ourselves, so people won't block us in, lol. Thank you so much for proposing this. I've provided pictures below as a reference. Also, not sure, this is correct department for a complaint on trash." Okay, I'm not gonna read that part. Okay. That was from Mike Paquette. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay.
Chairman McCann, we also received a second written email on this item. I don't know if you wanna read that one in. We typically do not, but since you read the other one in, feel free to do so. I believe it's on this item.
I, thank you, I didn't see the backside. Thanks. Okay, I'll spin through this. From Stan Schrofer. "Thank you for looking into modifying our traffic on residential streets. There was no parking for Primo Market, except two spots on the side marked twenty-four minutes. Was parking ever studied when Primo Market applied for permits? There is no parking for employees, let alone customers. The San Luis Rey Park has excess spots which have become utilized, which is great, but not enough. The parking at the market has had issues with people parking in the crosswalk as you turn onto San Luis Rey, which could be red-curbed as a reminder in the crosswalk area. The rest of the plan seems to make sense, but needs one other issue included. On the sharp turn on Avenue to San Luis Rey towards the golf course, there have been numerous people parking on that corner, with their vehicles sticking out into the street, and a vehicle parked on the opposite side of the street, making that curb very dangerous. I request, request a portion of the curb also be red-marked on the sharpest turn areas toward the golf course, with increased traffic and parking increase, which has become twofold since Primo went in. Since Primo went in, many people park on that curb on both sides of the street to walk down to the market. There have been several near misses with pedestrians, cars, bikes, e-bikes, and golf carts already. It's just a matter of time before we see another accident there. Please take this into consideration when making the modification to our streets. Thank you, Sherri Schrofer." Are there any other comments on this item? Seeing none. Does anybody have any disclosures or conflicts of interest they wanna discuss on this item? Seeing none, okay. Then...
I have a couple more questions.
Okay, please, please.
Okay, do you know the employee parking, what Primo's asking, or where their employees are parking? I, I wonder if they can park in somewhere else that might help that situation? Has there been a conversation with Primo?
Not related to that, staff parking space.
Yeah, that might be cool, right? I don't know. But also, what about a, a speed bump consideration? Is that even something to consider? Or, I mean, a whole 'nother study has to be done for, for that?
Yes, it's about different procedures. We need petitions for the speed bump.
I understand.
It hasn't been, received anything.
Thank you.
Okay, please.
Was Primo a market or a restaurant? Because one of the, Mr. Anderson said it's a...
Yes, per my research, and this Primo is a retail grocery business, not the restaurant.
But they still, they, they, they do Taco Tuesday on, Tuesday and Friday, and they...
Okay.
Sorry, I'm...
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
They're basically a deli.
Thank you.
So, the question is, is it being occupied by a restaurant?
There's no sit-down, you can't sit down and eat there. You could order tacos to go.
Okay.
In staff's review of the business license application originally, this is a retail-to-retail use. It's basically a small grocery store, and they have a deli the way that an Albertson's or Ralph's has a deli.
But Ralph's and Albertson's has a parking lot.
Mr. Anderson, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'll shut up.
And I can't address, the lack of parking was something that is a pre-existing non-conformity. It applied to the previous retail business that was there, they had zero parking. Any business that goes into this spot is going to have zero parking.
And one thing I will say, what Adam just said is, it hasn't been reviewed recently or in the near term, as far as changing use. So, it hasn't been just approved, it was approved long before, and it's an existing condition, we're just trying to make work. So, we can't go back and say, hey, you don't have parking.
No, I...
It's not in our purview, or not one of our options, and this is the start to finding an option that reduces the problems.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Couple technical things, but it's a good opportunity for lessons learned, right? Entitlements are attached to the property, not the property owner. So, if the property gets an entitlement ten years ago, and then the property switches ownership, those entitlements remain in place. So, we take that entitlement process carefully, you know, very carefully because of that. And so, we also act as the Transportation Commission, Planning Commission, Transportation Commission, that is within our authority and our charter. And so, I think this is appropriate place for the concerns to be discussed, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. No, this is, this is where the public comes to do their business, and this is the right forum for that. So, what I would like to propose tonight is that we have our professional staff recommendations to make an incremental improvement, and I, I'm supportive of those recommendations. What we may wanna consider is adding a request of staff to, to go along with those staff recommendations, to ask code enforcement to spend some time in the area at some of the peak times, do some observing, maybe do some parking enforcement, and that, and ask that the code enforcement report back to Mr. Otamian their observations, and if it can, if they observe ongoing safety concerns, then hopefully, the staff would then look, acknowledge that, and maybe return with additional incremental improvements. So, those are my thoughts on how we could move forward tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think they've done actually a pretty good job of, with what they've got to address some issues, certainly not all of them, but we're just giving a recommendation to council for approval. And I think a recommendation to council then would be to continue to study the problem, have them recommend to engineering and traffic that they should continue to monitor the problem, and I'm in favor of moving it along with a recommendation.
Thank you. I, I, go ahead.
I'm in favor of the signs directing to the park, parking, as it is empty, and during those peak times, it could be used, maybe to relieve the congestion. I have a question on this one letter, was recommending the painted corner. Is it different than the one that we're viewing now, that Stan has recommended?
Yeah, it's, it's like a block down.
A block down, okay.
It's like a, a block or two to the...
To the other area.
To the east, to the right.
And the parking on the corners, because they do park on the corners, that's perfectly legal?
I think it's in the California Vehicle Code, it's illegal to park around a curb or turn.
It's around a curb, okay.
Like, they don't have to paint every curb or turn red, because it's fundamentally illegal.
Okay, because...
No, it's the opposite. Because I've researched that, you can park on a corner, as long as there's not a curb cut. Want to check me out? That's, it's true.
You see it.
Well, I can address it.
I've called about people parking on the corner. If it's not marked, if there's no curb cut, police have told me they can park.
Okay.
So, that's why it's important to have a red curb, where there's a curb cut for ADL purposes, that's a ticket.
That's a ticket.
And my only suggestion would be is enforce it right now, is to request that the sheriff go out there and enforce it, because they can ticket anything right now, it doesn't have to wait for a council report. Enforce what's there, but yeah, you can.
Okay.
Don't, don't let it get out.
That's news to me. I have a question. Would, you know, we're proposing, it's being proposed for these twenty-minute parking zones. Would it be easier to enforce if it was metered?
The Orange County Sheriff's Department is the enforcement authority here. I cannot speak to what's easiest for them to enforce. I can say that time limits require constant returns to the site. We, they do have a mechanism for marking, or I should, I don't wanna say marking tires, because that's not something that the sheriffs do. They, they'll, they'll mark the ground around tires to determine where a vehicle is at any particular point in time. I don't see them going through that process for twenty-four minutes, which means that they would, somebody would have to sit there for twenty-four minutes and observe parking violations. So, if we're talking about an area that's got a capacity for, you know, four or so cars, it's like two cars an hour, maybe, that, you know, sitting there would, you know, they'd be checking on, on, on that type of cadence.
I understand, but if it was metered, they'd only have to drive by, hey, it's not paid up, boom, ticket and go?
Yes.
So, I don't know if that's, would be considered an improvement or not?
Yeah, things where it's either they're in violation or they're not, and it can be determined at a specific point in time, much easier to enforce.
Okay.
I'd like to see this moved along to see if this, some of these solutions might have an effect, and then revisit if...
Okay.
If we still have any, still have issues, which we probably will.
Is that desire in the form of a motion?
That would be in the form of a motion. Do I need to get a pair of glasses?
Please.
And thank you for coming to speak, and thank you for your past service. Getting there.
Commissioner Prescott, before you begin, I want to address Commissioner Cosgrove's recommendation for code compliance reporting on, on, on this.
I would like to include that.
If that's something that you would like to include, I would like to let you know, code compliance does not do parking enforcement.
No, they don't.
So, there, there wouldn't be any enforcement on it. If you would like staff to, to observe conditions at any point in time in the future, we're more than capable of assisting with that effort.
Before I make the motion, would you, what say you about code compliance? Do we move it forward with code compliance?
Well, not code compliance, but with, with traffic enforcement.
Traffic enforcement.
Recommended enforcement of parking, parking restrictions in the area.
Can I just ask a quick question, Ms. Adam? Who does the park...
Who does the parking enforcement at the pier, in the parking lot there that's where you buy, use the meter?
Meter parking is enforced by the RSVPs.
Okay. I'm just suggesting, I mean, you tell me if you think this is a waste of your time. I don't want to waste your, the staff's time. The idea that we have a citizen telling us that it's a very dangerous situation, I think merits additional caution on our part to send code enforcement out to just occasionally look at the situation, look at traffic movements, look at the condition, and report back to staff if there's any additional, or to our traffic engineering staff if they have any further suggestions that could improve the situation. Would that be an appropriate use of their time?
So the code compliance staff does not have the technical expertise to determine what is a public safety.
People to do that?
Either the Orange County Sheriff's Department or our Transportation Engineering Division.
I see.
And you could request that they monitor the situation, even though that is part of their normal jobs after installing new features. They'll follow up on that. But it would be better put to them to ensure the situation's safe.
So, Mr. Kim, is that something that you plan to do, is once these are, these measures are implemented, you or someone on your staff would go periodically and just see how it's working?
Yes, it's possible for short-term period, but not the periodical stuff.
Right.
Because we have short-term, yes.
Would having the sheriff there just kind of be a double benefit?
Yeah, I don't, we have enough, we have enough constraints on our sheriff's side as it is.
I thought that's what Adam said. Did you say?
Traffic enforcement.
Yeah, traffic enforcement.
That's what we came for.
That's right.
Get them out there, get them out there tomorrow. Somebody can just call.
Yes, they're very responsive, and I'm more than happy to talk to them about monitoring, you know, this area to the extent that they can devote resources to this area. That's up to them.
Maybe it's just educating them to the extent that they're patrolling that area to what to look for.
Yes, and I believe that...
Maybe it's education.
Yes, I believe city staff has had a number of communications with the Orange County Sheriff's Department about the concerns that we've received about this area.
It's, it's...
So they are aware, and I can, I'll be more than happy to follow up with them as well.
Does that, does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm just writing that. All right, recommend city council to determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15306, Class 6, Information Collected, and 15301.K, Class 1, Existing Facilities in the State SEQA Guidelines, and for the recommendation of approval to the city council for proposed parking modifications as follows. Reduce the red curb to 50 feet on the east side of South El Camino Real and South Avenida San Luis Rey. Install a 60-foot green curb with a 20-minute parking limit from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Daily, south of the above-red curb along South El Camino Real. Reduce the parking duration from 24 minutes to 20 minutes between 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Daily, on the south side of Avenida San Luis Rey next to Primo. Install an 80-foot green curb on the south side of Avenida San Luis Rey between the 6-foot red curb and the alley. Install a 40-foot red curb at the southeast corner of the Kellydale, is that Comercio? Northeast corner of Kellydale, Comercio, and Avenida San Luis Rey. And we also recommend to include traffic enforcement regarding the concerns of the area.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. Before we jump to the next item, I did see a few people that kind of came in late. And I'm just wondering if there's anybody here that wishes to speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight? Still none. Great. Moving on. Item 8A, conditional use permit 23-063 EOS Fitness at 93 Via Pico Plaza Suite A. I open the public hearing. And do we have any commissioner disclosures or ex parte communication or conflict of interest on this item? Seeing none, and I opened the public hearing. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Can and Commission. The item in front of you is for a new tenant in an existing commercial space, EOS Fitness at 93 Via Pico Plaza. This item actually came before the commission in 2020, but was continued and not heard at that time. And so this is returning now for your actual consideration. So the location of this property is indicated here in this aerial view. Pico Plaza comprises what was the Staples Anchor Store in that L shape that continues down to the Dollar Store use at the bottom right corner of this image. This commercial property borders the I-5 freeway to the northeast and to the west and south, the, a portion of the Los Melinos Industrial Park. Directly south off the view of this are residential uses, but they do not directly abut the tenant space in question. So this photo shows the existing conditions of that space that I'm sure all of you are familiar with. There is 95,000 square feet of commercial space in this center. EOS itself has 30,250 square feet. This commercial center is zoned as Community Commercial 2, and it's within our West Pico Quarter specific plan. The proposal is for a full-service 30,250-square-foot fitness facility to enter this space. It would be a merger of not just the former Staples space, but to encompass and include the adjacent Fitness 19 tenant suite as well. The proposal would include a full fitness area along with locker rooms and a kids' club. It's proposed to operate 24 hours. They are going to be relying on shared parking, and there's an attachment within your report that indicates the observed parking analysis that supports that this is a new use in the area. There's no addition or expansion of existing commercial space. Everything is within existing footprint. This commercial property also has an existing master sign program. So two slides on analysis. The first is on compatibility and noise. The EOS tenant space is bordered by commercial uses within the Pico Plaza property, and then, as mentioned previously, by industrial uses to the rear. So behind the tenant suite are industrial uses, car repair uses. The shopping center has had other fitness uses in the past. Fitness 19 is operating there currently. There's also been a women's club, and other group-type instruction fitness uses that have come in and left over time in that area. There are no code compliance cases or nuisance cases related to those fitness uses that staff was able to identify. And there are a couple of conditions specific to this project to proactively prevent noise concerns. And those are Condition 7.14, related to limitations on group classes, and 7.22, that provides some recourse regarding soundproofing if there are any noise violations in the future. And then the second component of the analysis here is in regards to parking. Again, there is a full study within your packet. But the standard off-street parking rates by use result in a deficiency. That's common within our commercial shopping centers. So off of Camino de los Maris and others where we have a broad range of uses. If you counted the full off-street parking requirements for each of those businesses, there's a deficiency. So we do commonly have shared parking strategies at some of these larger shopping centers. And in those cases, we require a parking study. And this parking study in particular looked at parking on Friday and Saturday at hourly intervals. The current utilization is below 50%, as you saw again in the existing conditions. I think I captured one parking, one car in that view. And the result of that study, there's two directions that it analyzed. One was the use at the fully-loaded off-street standard by the city, and the other is based off of current professional assessments of the rate of parking that's used at fitness uses. In either of those scenarios, there is still a surplus expected at the property. My final slide seems to not be showing, so I can just go ahead and say that that was a slide that indicated the staff recommendation, which is simply to adopt the resolution in front of you and define this project as categorically exempt from SEQA. It fits within a Class 1, that's the Section 15301 exemption for existing facilities as there's no expansion of the existing commercial space, and it's simply a change of use within that existing developed area. That concludes staff's report. If there are any questions, I'm certainly available to respond to those. And we do have a representative from the applicant here this evening as well who would like to provide a comment.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Quick question for Jonathan. Is, have they asked for any variances in the sign program for that site?
No, there's no variance requests regarding the signage, and they haven't submitted a sign permit at this time. So there's, there is an existing master sign program for that area, and they'll be required to comply with that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jonathan, so there's, Fitness 19, is there part of the space? They're moving out, and a new company's moving in?
That's correct.
Okay. It's all the same use, more or less. Okay, the parking study, you mentioned shared parking. There's a couple of different kinds of shared parking. So what you're talking about here is that all the tenants in the center are sharing, so they can use any, anybody can use any of the spaces available. Okay?
Correct. There's, with one caveat, and that's referenced within the study, there are about 15 spaces that are demarcated as specific to restaurant uses. So the F.A. Restaurant, as an example, I believe has eight spaces out of the 396 that are identified as for their use only. But the majority, 380 or so spaces, are shared.
Okay. So I think I saw here that it said it's, there was a parking demand study?
Correct.
But yet, it looks like the research was done based on the existing uses and what's parked there now. Is there a parking, I could have missed it, but was there a demand study on a similar facility that was that size, a different location?
So there's, there are tables, and this would be within the grouping of, I believe it was Table 2A, 2B, 2C, that reference ULI rates. So ULI is Urban Land Institute that does analyses of parking. And so they incorporated into that section what are common usage rates of parking based off of different classifications of commercial uses. So they established within that table what are the observed existing conditions at the site. And then if we presume full occupancy of the vacant suites applying those standards, what's the resulting situation? Are we deficient? Are we, do we have sufficient parking? And what they were seeing is that they would have a surplus of 78 parking spaces after you account for those estimated rates of use.
Okay, now is that based on the program at all? I mean, did you look at the amount of space that's used for, you know, large, you know, groups of people, say yoga classes or something like that versus independent workout?
I'd have to defer to the applicant if they have more specific information. The, it's based off of the square footage of a fitness use and applying that to the comparable here, 32,000 square feet, and getting a resulting number based off of the square footage of this use. I'm not sure if the underlying data draws from different types of classifications. I'm not sure what the draw was to arrive at their fitness assumption there.
Okay, so it seems like you would, you'd want to look at another facility with a similar program and similar square footage, and that would show you the typical demand for that kind of a use as opposed to just using tables for, it sounds like a generic fitness center, which could be primarily freeway's or something like that. So that's not provided? That wasn't, doesn't sound like that was looked at?
It's correct. The tables are not specific to, in your example, it doesn't reference another EOS facility that is also 32,000 square feet to make that assumption. It's making that assumption based off of broad observations of typical uses and parking rates of fitness uses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Jonathan, we kind of talked before the meeting also. No consideration that I found in the report on traffic generation, not just the parking count. We're in a unique situation on the street coming into this site. When In-N-Out went in, I'm sure there was parking counts done. There were vacancies in the shopping center, so there were a low count. And I'm sure it was based on retail use, not gymnasium use, which has a much higher turnover and more trips. And I need, I'm having a hard time getting my hands around all the driveways opening out onto the street and the interference of cars crossing and going out towards Pico from In-N-Out, Del Taco, so there's, I think, four driveways. Their active time, which their parking study even identifies, are the noon hour and right after work, which are also the busiest times for the gymnasium. And I think we need to validate that that street is designed with the outlets in the turn left lanes, not necessarily at the applicant's expense, but we need to know that that street can handle the added trips that are going to occur during those hours specifically. Because I know 24-hour fitness, noon, and dinner hour is the busiest times of day. And that's also when the most count is for the restaurants. And with all those driveways, maybe some are going to have to be changed to in-only and maybe one-out, or maybe that first left turn, because we can only stack four to five cars from the stoplight to where they've marked off keep clear. And I, our traffic engineer's here, but I don't think he was here when In-N-Out was approved, so I don't know if he'd be able to respond to that. But for me, I'd need to know that before we can, the uses, I don't think a problem is just, we've got to make sure that the street serving it is ready for it.
Okay, anybody else with any questions? Okay.
Just real quick, what is the maximum occupancy for the bill, for, you know, this use? Do you know what it'll be rated at?
I don't know what the maximum occupancy is offhand. The, it's going to be an assembly use, and that's a component of the plans that were in front of you. You'll see that there's some interesting dimensioning, and that's related to just making sure that the fire exiting is appropriate.
Okay, never mind. We found it. Thanks.
1,81.
1,81.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission on this item? Is the applicant here, would they like to address the commission on this item? They have 10 minutes, right? You have 10 minutes between you, if you both want to.
Good evening. I'm Mark Stoner at 28372 Camino La Ronda in San Juan Capistrano. I'm Vice President of Real Estate for EOS Fitness. And we've looked at this site for quite a while. We, as you know, we worked on it a couple of years ago, but when COVID hit, all of our clubs were shut down, so we stopped expanding. But we're expanding again. We like this location. We think it's a great location. We've wanted to put a site in San Clemente for quite some time. We've wanted to put a site in San Clemente for quite some time. We're in the wellness and fitness business. We like to keep people healthy, and we think another good strength gym in this market would be very, very successful. I echo your concern on parking, because parking's extremely important to us, and we do not want to get in any situations where, down the line, one or two, three years from now, we have problems with parking. So as a business, we looked at it carefully and felt that the parking was sufficient, and more than we typically need. This gym's a little bit smaller than our typical gyms. We're usually 40,000 to 50,000 feet. This gym won't have a pool, won't have a jacuzzi, won't have a sauna, may not have a kids' club, probably will not have a kids' club now. We will have a small group training in there, but it's primarily a strength gym, and it'll be a very much a state-of-the-art gym. We're anticipating that just the hard construction's going to be about $2.5, probably closer to $3 million right now, and that's excluding our FFNE. And if you were to go and check some of our gyms online and look at some of our newer facilities, I think you'll find that we're one of the state-of-the-art operators in the industry right now. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stoner?
I do. It's, I think it says on your application that you are going to have a kids' facility there.
Yeah, we, it does, but we may pull that out. And that's still something that we're considering, but we may not put a kids' club in here. It's a little smaller gym for us, and it's going to be primarily a strength gym with really a lot of the state-of-the-art strength equipment, so we may or may not have a kids' club.
Okay. Does a kids' club, is, I mean, that's for kids to exercise, or?
No, it's kids for, when the parents come in, want to work out, they leave the kids in the kids' club, and we effectively take care of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Stoner, what, from other gyms, what are your peak hours approximately? And do you have a feeling for, you know, the peak number of occupants on a typical day? Not January 1st, 2nd, but?
Yeah. We haven't built a lot of the smaller gyms, but I can tell you there are larger gyms that are 40,000 to 50,000 feet. And we're really busy in the mornings, and in the afternoons, and in the evenings, but it's, but we get, we get steady traffic throughout the day. I mean, if you go to our gyms at 10:00 or 11:00, or 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon, you'll see us busy. And in the mornings, real early, sometimes 3:00 or 4:00 in the mornings, we'll have 30 people in the gym. It's not uncommon. In fact, if you Google Mark Wahlberg, he was in our gym in Temecula about two months ago, and he did a TikTok video on us, and he couldn't believe in Temecula at 4:00 in the morning that there were 20 to 30 people working out with him. So, and we try to drive the early morning business, because those are a lot of the strength guys, and those types of individuals, a lot of times they like to work out in the morning. But it's pretty steady, but it is busy in the evenings, too.
So do you have a guesstimate of kind of what your normal peak occupancy would be? Is it 100? Is it 150?
I can tell you, I can tell you that, this is off the top of my head, but we're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 1,200 to 1,500 trips a day, spread across the whole day. And that's, that's the trips of people coming in, into the gym itself.
Okay.
But I don't know, I can't tell you how many in the morning, how many in the afternoon, how many in the evening. I don't have those statistics.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I have a question for you. Yeah. Since you want to operate in, with the permit, 24 hours a day, is that seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just talk to us a little bit about your off-hours operation, your staffing, the personal safety measures that you take for your members, mainly from, I'm thinking, you know, late night, 10:00 to say, like, 4:00 in the morning? What, how do you, how does, what's that, what's your model look like for that?
Well, we staff it a night with one to two people, full-time, throughout the night. We have a loss prevention, risk and safety management department that really handles any issues that might come up. But the onsite manager or assistant manager at that time, I mean, they obviously have the ability to make decisions, you know, at whatever point in time that there was an issue, whether it's, you know, fire, or safety, or anything like that. We haven't had a lot of problems in the past, where we have had problems, frankly, have been in basketball courts, and we've eliminated those quite some time ago. But we don't, we haven't had a lot of problems that I'm aware of at night. But the gym's, you know, it's pretty busy at night. I mean, there's people in there typically all night long. I'm not sure about how many are in there 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, but I know when you get 3, 4, 5, there's, there's quite a few people in the gym. That's when I go.
But your staff, your staff, it's not one of these self-service where they key fob in and are maybe the only ones in there?
Absolutely not. It's staffed 24 hours, 24 hours, 7. It's staffed, one to two people.
Okay. And then can you respond with any other information that would be helpful to us with regarding the trips, and whether it's distribution or peak, just to address some of the concerns that you might have heard about the road, that little roadway coming in, that you, by the post, between the post office and In-N-Out, and the capacity, and, you know, it's, turn movements are limited for people exiting, right? Especially left, and we want to make sure it's not a constant flow. Can you just maybe talk a little bit about that?
You know, I think the difference, and this is just my observation, because I don't have any statistics, but just from going to so many of our clubs, it's just kind of a constant flow in and out of our clubs. You'll see cars coming and going all the time, a little bit more into peak hours, but there's no, like, big rush or anything along those lines. I mean, we looked at the entrance, too, because we were real concerned when we found that In-N-Out was coming in. We thought, oh my goodness, are they going to be stacked enough so they're not jamming up the drive aisles? But, you know, it seems like they settled down after a couple of weeks, and they had plenty of stacking for their drive-through. We, but I think we're pretty steady. I mean, I'll see if I can come up with some statistics, but I'm not sure we have any.
It sounds like you're actually targeting a certain particular type of individual for this specific site. It sounds like it's scaled down, you're going to focus on kind of a niche, and the strength training area, and so that, that may impact your numbers as well. Is that a fair assumption?
We haven't opened too many of the smaller gyms, but we won't have a spin room, for example. We will have a small group fitness room in there. We'll have all of our recovery material in there, because what's real big in the industry now is recovery, with compression pants, and cryo beds, and massage beds, and we'll have all those in the gym. But, but our strength gym, from a strength perspective, it's actually kind of across the board. You'd be amazed how many high school kids now are going in for strength training at our gyms. And from a young people perspective, strength training's, it's pretty big right now.
Commissioner, if I may, good evening. Bob Pullman, 22145 Baltar, Los Angeles, California. Here, again, on behalf of the applicant, my company, Seven Solutions, the company I work for, we help support clients across the country with development. So I spend a fair amount of time at these hearings. And to speak to the point on traffic, and I heard your concerns there, Commissioner, in regards to the trips, what I can tell you is, from my experience with building other QSR restaurants, a typical one-to-two lane drive-through will do anywhere between 100 and 160 cars per hour. So when you multiply that times the course of a day versus 1,200 cars over a 24-hour period, hopefully that would help alleviate your trip concerns, because QSR's goal is to turn them over as fast as they can, whereas these trips are much more transitioned and periodic, and not a consistent flow of the breakfast rush with 160 cars an hour for three hours straight. So hopefully that helps a bit with some of those infrastructure concerns, because I've definitely been in a position where we see that the drive-through looks good, until it doesn't, and then it's in the street, so.
So you think the 1,200 trips is a very representative number?
Of the gym?
Yeah. 1,200?
Across, a full day, yes, across a 24-hour period.
Okay. So if we did a, not a 24-hour day, let's say 20-hour day, that's then an average of 60 trips an hour. Is that a representative? About, approximately? Okay.
On the aggregate, of course, if you're going to average it, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Is that trips in and out, or just in?
That would be in, similar to a drive-through, the in and out.
1,500 ins, and also 1,500 exits?
Yes, arguably the same for every use, right? The in and the out, but yes, sir.
Yeah, because sometimes they say 1,500, and they, they count the in and the out, and put them together. But this is 1,500 in and 1,500 out?
1,200, I believe, is.
1,200.
Yes, sir. That'd be correct.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Jonathan. So do you regulate, how do you time the traffic lights for coming through the rush that's coming out? Not, not, not a rush from the gym, but you have the gym now, and also the In-N-Out.
So this is, it's a question, if I can maybe get Ryan to come back up to the podium, to address specifically timing of traffic lights. He would be better positioned to respond to that element of which lights are timed, and at what intervals, and if it's based off of, you know, sensors, or on a strict timing basis.
I guess I'm asking what the methodology would be. How many vehicles or trips in and out would require something to be done with that intersection so that you could accommodate the traffic exiting?
Ryan, yes, if you wouldn't mind coming up to address that question, I think you'll be better positioned to respond to that.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Kemp, Senior Traffic Engineer. Unfortunately, I haven't reviewed that report yet, but generally speaking, for signal timing, yes, we, based on the level of service studies, we may modify traffic signal timings based on the traffic volumes. But also, we have to consider the general synchroni, traffic synchronization based on the major corridors. We also have to consider that part, too. So we have to, and then balance them between those.
At this time, with the In-N-Out on the corner there, have you had to make any accommodations as far as timing on those lights?
As far as I remember, I, we have not touched anything. We have our own synchronization project, programs, is applied to the signal timings, along the Pico especially, so we haven't changed anything based on the new In-N-Out traffics.
Thank you, Ryan. I like having the space filled. It's an upgrade to having it vacant. I share similar concerns that have already been expressed about the exiting of the parking lot, the entrance of the parking lot, possibly one way in, possibly one way out. I know that there are, how many exits or entrances are on the backside? First you come in, and then, there's four?
And then there's the cul-de-sac at the end.
The cul-de-sac, right.
The cul-de-sac. So you've got, In-N-Out's got, I think, three up to Del, then the Del Taco one, then the main entrance, and then there's one at the cul-de-sac, coming out of the parking lot.
It seems to be working now.
So I think there needs to be some, well, in discussion, we should probably.
Right. We should. Right.
Chair, we do need to ask if we do have any public comments or rebuttal for the applicant's statements.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this issue, or challenge what the applicant said? Okay. Seeing none.
I have a question.
Please.
What size is, what is it, Fitness 19 that's in there right now? How big is that?
Yeah, it is. I believe it's just around 8,000 square feet.
So this is going to be four times that's the size.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Do we have any discuss, anyone wanting to discuss this item, or?
Yeah, I can.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah. You know, I can find that the parking is probably not going to be an issue. I can agree with, I think, staff's recommendation on that. But without getting something from the engineering department and traffic, I'm hesitant to give it my blessing until that's done, or at best that we get a traffic response from engineering that is reviewed by staff before it can move forward. Even if we move it along, that'd be a condition, one or the other.
Chair, Vice Chair, excuse me, Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
It's been many years, I apologize.
I've worn all the hats.
Just to reiterate the process, the development management team did review this project in February of this year. Engineering, and as part of that review, transportation engineering does have, does review the project and the proposal, and through their comments, they provided conditions of approval that they recommend to ensure that this project is consistent with the city's general plan and municipal code. That is basically a review and a recommendation of support for this project from, from that group. However, if.
I understand that. I'm concerned, though, that they made during the In-N-Out reviews, each of those drive aisles going in and out, and then at the end, they weren't, on the first one, they weren't going to have a left turn out lane, and they've put that in at the end. I don't think we saw the, the count, but every single one of those exits comes out with a left turn across two lanes of traffic, and they're no more than 70 feet apart, so that's three cars, and I don't think they probably anticipated, so I would need confirmation that that was considered.
Yes, and staff will provide that for the planning commission, if that's something that you would like to see.
Yeah, I think this is a great use. It's tough to find tenants to fill a 30, 25, 30,000 square foot space. We want it to be successful, so that's the reason I think there's some of these concerns. You know, the parking, there's a lot of parking there, right? And, and it's been pretty empty for quite a while. So there becomes this sort of perception, I think, that nobody goes there. But that hopefully will change. So our concern, and I do share the concern of Commissioner Crandall, mostly for the traffic. But it sounds like, if, if this is true, that it's a steady flow during the day, because I think what we've seen, I don't go to the gym, but, but I do exercise, but I don't go to the gym, is that there are peak times where there's a lot of people coming in, a lot of people going out. And that's a concern, I think, more than, than anything else with this project. So if that's true, I mean, and that's why I like to see the demand study focus on another similar project. You know, am I ready to vote against this one? I don't think so tonight, but boy, I sure would feel better if we could, if we could have something that would show us that that's really the case, that people are coming and going all day, pretty steadily. I guess we can trust the applicant. But again, we want it to be successful. You know, nothing worse than having, having you guys go in there and then have these kind of issues come up, especially with regard to trying to exit the facility, because people are not going to come back, you know, if they have a problem getting out of there. So is it a good idea for us to ask for that to be looked at a little more closely, especially in this location? And if we do, what can we really do about that? You know, I mean, it's, it's sort of a, I don't want to say do or die.
I have a comment about your comment. I don't think actually the issue is going to be with this, this area. It's going to be getting in, and for them, for, to go to the gym, there's two exits. There's no reason for them that they can get, can't get out. I think it's going to be upstream by the In-N-Out. If you're trying to exit the In-N-Out, and now you've got a queue of cars turning left into, into the center, and it's just a constant flow, then right turn, your ability to make a left turn out of In-N-Out is what's compromised. The customers that are going to go to the gym, they're, that's a no factor for them. There's two exits, one of them's in a cul-de-sac, there'll be no, there'll be no issue for them to exit and just drive straight out. So I think, I think from that perspective, I don't have any concerns. It's more the incidental impact on the other uses that are upstream from the gym, and if the, and that's why I was trying to get at the trip, because to me, it's all about the trips. If it's, if it's a small drip, and there's going to be pockets where it's, you know, maybe it's heavier than normal, but it's going to function normally, where there's breaks in the traffic, and cars can turn left out of In-N-Out, I think it's going to be fine. It's just if it's constant, 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 and you can't turn left, that's the, that's the unintended consequence of approving this project.
Which is the light that could? Which is the light that could get backed up, because you're, you've got a long line of cars now, and no one can turn in to get out to the light.
I'm feeling that the use is good to have, that the town could, would benefit from it. I think we need to breathe some life into that center, and so I, I am inclined to support the project, given that what the applicant is saying is, it's a specialized type of gym, it's not gonna appeal to the masses with all these different huge classes, right? It's more the functional training and specialized training, which is kind of where everybody's going to today. And that then the trips are gonna be more evenly distributed throughout the day and into the night. And so for that reason, I'm, I'm open to supporting the project tonight. Those are my thoughts.
I gotta comment on that. So there are gonna be a lot more cars coming in and out than Fitness 19 is currently creating, right? But they're, they're, they're using a lot more of that retail space that if there's a smaller project, and then we, we passed a smaller one next to it, and a smaller one next to it, and a smaller one next to it, it creates the same amount of flow. So I don't think if you, if you divide them up by four different companies, or you make it one big company, that it'd be any different. I think it's just, you know, that, that's my two cents. So I think for that reason, and I think it, that In-N-Out will have their peaks, but then the rest of the day, it's, there's no impact. So for that couple hours every day, I'd love to have them in our city, and I support it also.
I think worst-case scenario is the In-N-Out customers can't turn left till they're gonna turn right, and have to go to the cul-de-sac and turn around and go back out. I think that's the worst-case scenario.
Okay, I'll jump in. And on our next project that we're gonna review tonight, there's a condition of approval that takes into consideration effects on other adjacent property. We've gotta remember, we gotta also protect In-N-Out, because we gave them approval to be there and design that site. So if this severely impacts their ability to get people in and out in an efficient way, we haven't done our job. And I'm not sure that the applicant would want to take the risk of a condition of approval that says they would have to alter their business plan if that occurs. And we should address it now rather than later. And it may very well be that engineering and staff will look at what the studies were with In-N-Out and say, nope, no problem, it's gonna work. And then we've got it documented, we can't come back to the applicant and say, hey, it's interfering with their business, so you're gonna have to change your business plan. I think we should find it out now and not have to put that condition in there. Otherwise, I would hold, having a condition that if it occurs, they'd have to figure out a way to remedy it.
So you're, guess mine if we just finish this? So you're, you're, you're kind of leaning towards a continuance with direction to staff to return?
Unless, unless engineering can say they will do that study, and we all agree that staff can review that document. But I want it in the record as far as our approval, that that will be done.
I would agree with that. And then we're not delaying the process that's in front of us right now.
Yeah, but I think that needs to be done, and it needs to be to the satisfaction of the.
Jonathan, how does that sit with you in terms of execution? Can you execute on that?
Yeah, I think that the option in my mind would be to add another condition. In this case, it would be placed in a location prior to issuance of building permits, where they're already working with the traffic consultant, so they can continue to work with that consultant. But in this case, it's not a concern of parking, it's a concern of trip generation and level of service. And so we can request that additional data for Ryan to review and frame that as must be reviewed and approved by.
Bart, does that work for what you intended it to be?
It accomplishes what I'm saying, that we need it documented, we need to make sure that we've protected In-N-Out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And done our due diligence. And we've worked with the client to find, or the applicant, to find a solution so their project can move forward. And I do trust staff and the planning department to review with engineering that information. And so if Jonathan could come up with a.
Do you draft something, Jonathan?
I'd like to hear from the other commissioners first. Commissioner McCann, Jeff?
Well, my comment is, I've been to In-N-Out around four o'clock, five o'clock several times. I haven't been there early in the morning, but I haven't noticed anything in the intersection to my surprise, and I think it's because of how it's designed and the long, you know, and the drive-up, the long, the number, the capacity of cars it can take. This is a parking lot that I've been there several times, you know, over the last seven years, and it's dead. I think in the report, the traffic department has already, we've already heard a comment that they've probably already looked at it. I'm willing to take the risk that I think, you know, in time, we have the ability that if that intersection become a problem, we can change the signal, the signalization. Because I don't see any other, what are you gonna do if it is?
I'm not worried about the signal. I'm worried about all those driveways that are only 70 feet apart.
Well, the signal, if you allow right-hand turn or the left-hand turn to get out of there, have a longer period of time, then that's gonna be more vacant, give them more opportunity to turn left. If the, if you extend the time period of the right turn out, because it's the same problem from the post office right now. I sometime get stacked up there, because you only have two cars in front of you, you know.
You've been exiting out of that lot?
Yes, the city could make it a longer right-hand turn or a left-hand turn, and I think that's all within our, and maybe the traffic department's already kind of, you know, thought that. I always think the biggest problem is when you're coming south on Pico, to turn in, because that could create a problem where you get stacking where it blocks Pico. But again, they could make the left-hand turn, you know, longer. My bigger concern would be there, because somebody's gonna get rear-ended. But I think the city has the ability to adjust the traffic signals to make things work. So I'm ready to, I'm ready to give it approval. This is a underused.
Site, yeah.
Yeah, and I think this is an opportunity to, I think it'll work. I think it's gonna work, and if we need to adjust the traffic signal, we do. Because you're not gonna put a traffic signal or any kind of signage at In-N-Out.
Okay, if we come, if we come to a problem where In-N-Out can't turn left out of their lots, have we impacted them?
Sure, but then you make the signal to left and right, get out quicker, make the time longer so that you can empty that, and when you empty it, then those people can turn out. I mean, right now, even how it is, sometimes you have to wait, because the left turn signal off of Pico doesn't let you come out.
Well, my concern is, they're having to cross two lanes. The people that are coming into the gym are gonna be in the left of the two lanes and wanna just blast straight through.
Well, they have to watch out for traffic, but there's also three ways out.
Are we creating a danger? I think so.
Okay, I'd like to weigh in here. I don't, I'm ready to move this project forward. I appreciate the applicant's investment, proposed investment in the location. The center is in desperate need of revitalization. Hopefully, it will spur more traffic to the other businesses there. If the In-N-Out study didn't consider that the, that the, this center could be full and fully operational and full of.
Well, that did for retail, but not for this use.
Well, I don't perceive this use as being, my perception is that this use is not gonna create, there's no way this use creates big platoons of cars at any one given time, because they don't have big spaces for big classes. So it's gonna be, you know, two cars an hour leaving, or two cars a minute leaving, 120 people, let's say, two cars a minute leaving. The In-N-Out people are gonna be able to get out of there. I'm a frequent user of In-N-Out, but I'm ready to move this project forward, and I think that, you know, that center, the fact that it's been underutilized forever should not penalize these per folks from, from moving forward. That's how I feel about the project, and I'm willing to listen for as long as everyone else wants to talk about it.
I'm curious how it's a penalty to have traffic confirm that this works.
Do you have a problem with his?
I don't see that that's a penalty to them at all. I think it's working with them to protect them.
I, I think that, I think that staff, as Adam already mentioned, they looked at it and considered, do we even need a traffic study or no? And determined, no. They determined they did need a parking study. That's my opinion.
How could we frame it? What's the best way to frame it, Bart?
Well, I'm just recommending we put a condition of approval, that be done before planning department moves on, after we approve it. A condition of approval.
Before they issue building permit?
Correct.
So they can continue.
Exactly.
With construction documents.
And any other contract negotiations or anything.
So what's, let me just finish. So what's the logical conclusion? Let's say they do find that there's an issue that you're suggesting.
And they resolve it. They find a way to resolve it.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good safe.
Okay, so I'm open to a motion.
Okay.
As long as it moves forward. As long as the project continues to move forward. I mean, that's, that's the whole point, is, is to invite the business in, and support business.
Yeah, they have a lot of work to do before they file building permit. I assume you guys haven't, haven't done construction documents yet?
Maybe you have, I don't know.
Okay, I will make the motion that we determine the project categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15301, class one existing facilities, and approving conditional use permit CUP 22398, Togethership Holistic Sports Academy, subject to conditions of approval.
Wrong, no. Wrong agenda item.
Different, different, it's the previous AA on AB.
I'm looking where we had the other condition of approval.
What page?
Redo.
Page six.
It should be.
Six.
Go for page six, Bart.
Page six on 8A.
That's condition of approval, resolution.
Page five, bottom of page five.
Right there. Okay, I will change my motion and make it determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15301, class one existing facilities, 14 CCR 1530, and adopt resolution PC 23009, approving conditional use permit CUP 23063, EOS Fitness, subject to conditions of approval. Therein, with the added condition of approval, that prior to issuing of building permits, that the planning department and staff determine that the traffic engineering studies for both In-N-Out and this project be reviewed concurrently to make sure that the access to both projects meet the city traffic engineer's requirements. And if you can clean that up a little bit, I would be more than open to any suggestions from staff.
One moment, I'll have a draft for you.
Could we condition that on the CFO?
Just in case.
Spend all their, you know, do all the construction, he says 3 million, that's a lot at risk.
Yeah, you don't wanna get down the road with CFO.
There's no traffic, it can take a while, sometimes.
It's just for discussion, while he's writing it. I see that really all the traffic needs to do is see what counts were used when the driveways were studied for In-N-Out and the adjacent properties, and it could be quite quick. It's just, I think we need it documented.
Okay, and just so you know, I'll be, I'm planning on making an alternate motion, just the straight recommendations of the, of the, of the staff report, so people can be thinking about that. There'll be two competing motions to consider.
Okay, proposed language following the initiation by Bart, this would fall into condition of approval 4.2, which comes within the prior to issuance of building permits section of the conditions. And the proposed language is that the applicant shall provide a traffic trip generation study accounting for the proposed fitness use and in consultation with the In-N-Out traffic analysis to demonstrate that the resulting levels of surface, service on Via Pico Plaza are maintained at an adequate level. If the city engineer determines that the level of service is degraded, the applicant shall follow traffic consultant and city engineer recommendations to improve traffic management on Via Pico Plaza.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'd like to make an alternate motion. I move that we determine the project categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA per section 15301, and adopt resolution PC 23-009, approving conditional use permit 23-063, EOS Fitness, subject to the conditions of approval thereon, without the added condition. Is there a second on my motion?
Second.
Okay. City Attorney, if I'm not mistaken, we vote on the alternate motion first, correct?
Correct, you vote on the last motion made.
Okay, are there any other motions anyone wants to make? Okay, all in favor of my motion? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion fails. Now we'll vote on the Commissioner Crandall's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes six to one. Congratulations.
Chair McCann, if we could, we'd like to announce the appeal period for this project.
Okay, can we let the city attorney make that announcement?
Yeah, just for the record, there is a 10-day, 10 calendar day appeal on this matter. Appeal period.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, 8B, conditional use permit 22-398, Togethership Holistic Sports Academy, 1010 Caie Sombra. And I will open the public hearing and also ask at this time if there are any commissioner disclosures or ex parte communications or conflicts of interest on this item.
I went and visited the site yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Great, do we have a staff report?
We do, and Lori Corey, Laura Corey, our assistant planner, will give that in just one second.
Good evening, Chair McCann and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Laura Corey, I'm the assistant planner in the planning division, and I'll be presenting CUP 22398, Togethership Holistic Sports Academy. The project is located at 1010 Caie Sombra, in the Business Park Planning Area Two, in the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. The parcel is located at the intersection of Caire Recodo and Caire Emencera, and surrounded by other commercial and industrial uses, and is separated from Caire Emencera by a vacant lot. The site is developed, a developed 43,000 square foot parcel that includes a two-story, 27-square-foot, single-tenant building that is currently the administrative office for the Togethership Holistic Sports Academy. The previous tenant was Advanced MP Technology, a distributor of electronic components. The adjacent office building to the north houses Reynard Corporation and Infrared Optic Corporation. Reynard Corporation and an infrared optics manufacturer. The request is for, I'm sorry, a private middle school that provides alternate, alternative education format, a 50% traditional coursework with 50% athletic classes and specializes in an athletic-focused school that has a regional draw. And it provides shuttles for students outside of San Clemente and carpool incentives for local students and their families. The site plan, the zoning code standards requires the school provide one parking space per staff member and one parking space per 10 students. The current site provides 47 onsite parking spaces and the projected enrollment of 160 students and 12 support staff requires 28 stalls. The existing office warehouse and storage space will include on the first floor an eighth-grade classroom, student lounge, restrooms, homework areas, along with a staff break room and workroom area and in the front entrance, a conference and reception area. The second floor will accommodate student lockers. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. The first floor is also going to house student lockers, a full basketball court, a training room, and a weight training facility and boys' and girls' locker rooms. The second floor layout will accommodate separate classrooms for each grade, a group study area, and will contain two administrative multipurpose rooms, a teacher's lounge, and the director's office. So the project meets all the applicable development standards and no additional expansion of the building is proposed. The site maintains compliance with those standards. Schools are conditionally permitted in the Business Park Zone within the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. The site is suitable for the school with proximity to residential neighborhoods in Talega and Rancho San Clemente. And its, its adjacency to La Pata, an arterial street, allows for convenient access for parents working in the city and out of the area. The school provides shuttle vans that transport students and the school encourages carpooling to help alleviate traffic. The general plan also supports the establishment of schools when they are compatible with the surrounding land uses per land use policy 602 and 101. Staff required a parking analysis to evaluate potential impacts on the level of service in the surrounding area. The city's Transportation Engineering Division reviewed the traffic analysis and concurred with its findings that the project would not result in a level of service impacts to the surrounding intersections and roadway segments. The analysis relies on several operational strategies to prevent parking and traffic impacts. The school provides three staggered start times and dismissal times by grade, thus reducing the need for long-term parking stalls and vehicle queuing. The traffic plan allows for a restricted one-way onsite traffic circulation and two full-time parking attendants monitoring the traffic flow and the safety. The school will use four school shuttle vans for pickup and drop-off of students from the San Juan Capistrano Station and carpooling for local students to reduce impacts. The, in the conditions of approval, 7.18 requires the applicant to modify the circulation strategy with the approval of the traffic division if vehicular queuing or traffic issues emerge. Staff therefore recommends the zoning, the planning commission determine the project exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15301, class one, existing facilities. The project proposes, proposed involves an existing use. And.
Are two of the recommendations?
I'm sorry. And adopt resolution number 2301O, approving CUP 22398, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Are there any questions? What other staggered times, do you know?
I'm sorry, yes.
The list of the staggered times? We found it. Thank you.
Yeah, for half hour, sorry.
Any other questions for staff?
The, for me, I think this is a great project. The, it's, it's all about the drop-off pickup. Walk me through the rationale for what staff is recommending here with this approach, the parking versus a drop-off zone. Can you just walk, walk me through that?
It was applicants, traffic consultant, along with the city engineer that confirmed that this would alleviate a mass dropping off. So staggering the times by grade would allow.
Staggering, it's genius. I think it's great. I'm, I'm questioning the circulation within the parking lot. And I don't, maybe you weren't involved in this discussion, but I'm assuming staff was involved with the applicant in talking about options. One option is the drop-off model. You pull up, they get out, you leave. You don't park. The option that staff is recommending is they utilize their parking spots, park the vehicle, exit the vehicle, walk through the parking lot, into the building, check in, walk back out. So there's two competing methodologies. I'm just curious what the process was or the conversation about one versus the other. Were you involved in those? If you're not involved, then that's fine. If you, if you want part of those conversations.
Well, it was more with the traffic engineering division. But I believe with the two attendants that there possibly could be that some type of drop-off. I know that a lot of the elementary schools do that with kindergarten. You know, I know these are older children.
Yeah, maybe the applicant can talk to it. The other question is, did you talk to them about the San Juan Station versus North Beach Station?
The project analyzed what the current location for the school is, and that is in Lake Forest. They took their model from that. And so majority of their students come from that area, the San Juan Station versus the North Beach.
But they're moving to San Clemente. And my concern is, you can't make that round trip in a half an hour. That's about 20 minutes one way. So they're going to, the first, after the first trip, they will be running behind. If you've, if you've driven there from that location to the San Juan train station, it's about 20 minutes one way. So I, I, I just don't understand how that model works. And maybe the applicant can speak to that as well. So those are my questions. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we invite the applicant to make a presentation. I see three speaker cards, Doug Ely, architect, Devin Quinn, founder, and Jonathan Louie, parking and traffic engineer. Combined, you have 10 minutes presentation time.
Thank you very much, and good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Doug Ely. I am the architect with DSEA. First of all, I would like to thank Laura Curry and Jonathan Lightfoot for their involvement to get us to this point. Devin Quinn, who is the founder and operator of Togethership, will speak first. But we also have Jonathan Louie, who is the traffic consultant with KOA that is here to be able to answer questions. So I'll hand it over to Devin first, and then I'll come back with some details about the project.
Hello. I don't want to take up too much time talking about how much I love Togethership and how much I love the city of San Clemente. I understand that the traffic in the parking was going to be one of the concerns. And I think we got, I think we got a lot of that figured out. Spent a lot of time. I also just want to say that just being here tonight, 11 months it took me to get here, and it's probably the most proud I've been of this whole four years of starting this school. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank you guys for being here. But I, I live here in San Clemente. I have two kids, a five-year-old and a three-year-old. And San Clemente is, is the best place on the earth. And as this school started to get bigger, I knew quickly that San Clemente needed to be its home base. I needed this to be in my backyard, in my hometown. And developing athletes, sure, but really it's using sports as the vessel to treat, to teach these kids how to be good human beings. That's, that's essentially what we're doing is really, that's the backbone of everything is creating good humans and creating good brothers, sisters, moms, dads, uncles, cousins as they grow older that are going to be in our, in our city here in San Clemente. And as much of the city is, or much of the students are from San Clemente area, there are kids, families that we draw from, from all over, from, from all the way up to Hermosa Beach and Seal Beach to Oceanside in Sunitas area. And even have some, some people moving in from state to come attend here at Togethership. And so again, like I said, San Clemente is, is my favorite place in the world. And nothing would make me, my, my life more complete than being able to open the business here in San Clemente.
Okay, I wanted to go through some details of the project. Laura, we have a couple of slides here. Do I just tell you when to click? The, the first few slides are of Togethership themselves. So if you could just click through the, the first three.
I'm seeing plans that are next.
Oh. Okay, well, wasn't, all right, let's just go right into the site plan then. The site plan was designed in coordination with the traffic consultant. And you'll see on that diagram that Laura had up a little bit earlier that there are three parking zones. And that is to coordinate with the staggered start times. The times are 7:30 to 8:00 for the eighth graders, 8 o'clock to 8:30 for the seventh graders, and 8:30 to 9:00 for the sixth graders. There is designated areas for staff parking on the right side of the site there, adjacent to our trash enclosure is. The existing site is, has some accessibility issues, and we are fixing those and upgrading the building to be compliant with ADA standards. That includes the accessible parking stall, the exit doors that have to be ADA compliant once you get down into the parking lot. There's also a public sidewalk along the street that has to get modified at the, at the driveways. Next slide. Okay, the, the floor plan, I'll explain the, the staggered start times. The blue area is the morning start, the homeroom area where when kids are dropped off, they will go and put their gear in the lockers, pick up what they need. They'll report for morning roll call in the basketball court area. And then from there, they'll be dispersed to either their curriculum classroom or to the gym or to, there, there may be some off-site functions in some fields that they can be dispersed to. So there, there's two classrooms per grade. On the lower level, you'll see a classroom in orange. That's the eighth-grade classroom. If you go up, go to the next slide, which is the second floor, the other eighth-grade classroom is in the upper left-hand corner with the orange. So 7:30 to 8:00, the kids get there. By 8 o'clock, they're dispersed. Some of them go to this, these two classrooms. The others go to the gym area or other designated areas. While they're in their classes, the seventh graders come in between 8:00 and 8:30. Same process happens where they get dispersed to their classrooms up on the second floor that's in blue, and then the sixth graders come in. So that's how the staggered start times work. The quantity of parking on site is sufficient per the, the city ordinances regarding the quantity of parking spaces required. We've quantified the volume of traffic. And the study does take into consideration how they currently operate and applying it to their growth to 160 students. And so we found that, that the parking lot is sufficient to, to handle this particular need. There are conditions that have been added into the conditions of approval should issues arrive, arise that other additional measures could be made with either additional carpools, vans, additional staggered start stop times. So there's a lot of tools in the toolbox that Devin can use to handle any issues should parking end up becoming an issue. But we don't think it, it will. Go to the next slide. Okay, that is the first floor plan. There are other things that we've done with this building to bring it into ADA compliance. The restrooms are all being upgraded to be compliant with ADA. Upgrading the building to a classroom or school. We met with Orange County Fire Authority, and we, in coordination with them and the building department, we've added a fire-rated corridor on the west side of the building. That's the left side of the, of the plan. The, the lobby area has been turned into an atrium with an enclosed fire-rated area. The existing portion of the lobby currently, right now, it spills over into where the basketball court is. So we've, part of this proposal is to remove that area and clear out that area for the basketball court to function. There's restrooms to the rear of where the fitness area is. And there's locker rooms there, showers, locker rooms. And also there is, in the upper left-hand corner, a workroom and breakroom. And that's where non-cooked foods, foods will be warmed for students. So there's a little, there's an area that they can handle their nutrition needs. Go to the next slide. Second floor, basically covered that with that colored slide. Those are mainly educational classrooms. There's a teacher's lounge on the second floor, right behind the lobby area. And then there's a director's office right there. So just double-check my notes, make sure I've covered everything that I wanted to. Is there anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to speak on, we don't have teams at the school. We're not athletically, we don't have our own team. So there's not practices or games or anything like that that goes on. We're purely focused on athletic and individual personal development. And so their practice, or their, their class is training during their, their class. So instead of PE, that would be when they are practicing their basketball or baseball or football class, or then during their electives. By coming to Togethership, that's going to be a athletic speed and, speed training, strength training, or also leadership and character development is a huge component of it. And so that consists of their whole, of their whole day, as well as their four regular core academic courses, math, science, English, and history. Those are also part of their regular schedule.
All right, 10 minutes. Perfect.
Just like we practiced.
Thank you. So we're available for any questions that you might have.
Did you guys share everything that you wanted to?
Yeah, I did want to touch on the parking stuff that he mentioned. So the reason that San Juan Capistrano train station has been elected in terms, of terms of how they're just feeding into San Clemente, some kids take the train, some kids take the train. And the San Clemente stop isn't always, especially as late, working out perfectly. But they can come from the north down to San Clemente or down to the San Juan station. Other parent, other parents can drive.
Other parents, other parents can drive, and just is a good spot to meet. But one shuttle van per grade will leave at the designated time and take the students down to the, to the school. The other shuttle van designated for seventh grade will pick those students up at, waiting for that time in eighth grade. Because sometimes kids will be sixth grade and eighth grade, brothers or sisters get dropped off, and the sixth grader will go, and then the eighth grader, or the eighth grader will go, then the sixth grader will come after. But it's basically catching them up higher, because it's not just train, it's other people too that would carpool from there.
Did I read that you were also going to bring up students from San Diego area?
They can take the train or the Greyhound bus lately is what they've been taking up. But yeah, and that would take them to the San Juan station where we would also pick them up.
Oh, so they come from San Diego to the San Juan station, or you were not going to open it to San Diego?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you were?
Yeah, it's up, yeah. I assume a lot of them coming from the North County area will probably drive now because it's only 15, 20 minutes away, whereas where we're currently located is closer to 45 minutes for them, an hour, and so they take the train from Oceanside up to
Oceanside, okay.
Irvine, but yeah.
Got it, thank you.
So the shuttle would be there at the station and leave roughly 20 minutes before they're supposed to, so they leave at 20 to 8, I guess?
Correct. Yeah, we have shuttle vans this year that we do, just going the opposite direction basically, and it works just like that.
Okay. So, to kind of address Cameron's concern, you're using one specific shuttle bus to go get the kids, drop them off, but not necessarily the same bus to go get the next set and the next set.
Correct.
So they have unique buses to go get each group.
We've had three buses this year that worked amazing, and so we've actually already added another shuttle bus, so next year we'll have four of them total, and, and no reason to not add another one even.
So you mentioned you're moving to San Clemente from, was it Lake Forest?
But Hill Ridge.
Wait, I mean, you mentioned why you want to move to San Clemente.
Because every time I make a left on the Potta, I just want to go right. I go left for 30 minutes north and I, and I leave my home.
So you, though, you have a facility that's, that's being replaced. Are you keeping your other one and?
No, we're not, and actually too, that's a big part of it. We share that facility currently with a, it's a volleyball facility, and we just use it during the hours of 9:00 to 4:00. Now, and we share it, like we're the second people there, and so now we will have it as our primary building ourselves, and not sure.
Did you look at any other properties in San Clemente?
For about three years, I've been looking pretty hard to find the right setup. This one checks all the boxes.
First of all, thanks for being here and bringing your business here. We appreciate it. It's a great business. It's a great model. I wish I had it when I was, back in that day. I think the character development, all of it, is wonderful. Our job is to make sure you're successful, that it works, right? That's it. And so, these questions are really aimed at trying to tease out any glitches or anything that could be a gotcha, or any issues, and work it out ahead of time.
Yeah.
So, just want you to know, we appreciate the fact that you've been at this a while, months, years, and, you know, I'm sure the staff has had multiple meetings, and it feels like it never-ending, and all of the rest. But the goal is to have this transition to a really successful community endeavor, right? So, thanks for explaining about the vans. I was envisioning that you had three vans all loaded up, and then they're going to do a turnaround, and so what you're, I, now I get it.
You were right, you were on point. If we had one, we would be in trouble.
That's right. And you've looked at the North Beach, and it doesn't have enough stops, you're saying, in the morning?
And it's just a little bit too, for helping families coming from the North County area, it's a little bit too much, trying to almost prevent them from having to go around that bend on the five, and catching them before they start coming all the way down. Which will then, yeah, it's like, you know, 10, 15 minutes, which for some of the parents, that's 30 minutes.
Okay, well, you know your, you know your customers better, so if that's what works for you. I was just wondering why you didn't pick North Beach?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other thing is, what is the drop-off protocol that you'd want to have? Can you explain that model of the, because maybe I don't understand?
You're on, you are where I was.
Yeah.
I see, like, it feels like it should pull in, drop off, get out and go. I believe that the distance of the parking spot and the curb is not far enough to allow a car to come, drop off and back up, so.
Maybe Jonathan can, this is Jonathan Louie with KOA Traffic Consultant.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to speak on your comment about the pickup-dropoff and why cars don't just queue up in the parking lot instead of cars now having to park. Is it possible to pull up that diagram that you had shown earlier? It's the colored diagram. It shows like the different colors of the parking zones.
The parking zones.
And also, it actually shows the number of cars that can queue, starting from the entrance of the building, which is on the top left, queuing up all the way to the entrance, the entrance driveway. If you zoom in a little bit, you can tell that from the top left, I think it's like three, four, and three. So realistically, especially during the pickup period in the afternoon, the queuing capacity within the site is only about 10 cars. And so what we determined, and just for your information, I actually went to the existing school three times to observe the, both the drop-off and the pickup, so I'm very familiar with the existing operations. And what we did was, we actually took the existing arrival and departure profile minute by minute of when cars come to drop off, and also for the, in the afternoon, when cars come and leave for the existing school. And I used that, those empirical data, and I applied it to the proposed school. So for example, for the drop-off, it was determined based on observation that parents actually come to drop off within the 30 minutes before class start time. And in the afternoon, parents come to pick up within the 30 minutes before classes end, and also because some parents come after the class end, parents also come 15 minutes after the class end time, so it's within a 45-minute period. So we took that information, and we applied it to the proposed school. And I believe the traffic engineer from the city also had a comment or concerned about if cars were to actually queue up within the parking lot, well, would they actually spill over onto the public street? And I did the analysis, and I sort of confirmed and agree with the city's concerns that, yeah, there's potentially cars would most likely queue up onto the public street. And that's why we proposed that the cars actually, or the parents actually park. And then, for example, in the afternoon, they would park because some would come a little bit earlier, they would wait for the students, and then when the bell rings, then the students come out, get into the cars, and then they would leave, you know, the cars would leave at that time. I wanted to just maybe briefly share this. So it, the parking is broken down into zones, sorry, zones A, B, and C. So, staff would park near the entrance of the site. The reason is because staff typically arrive before classes start, and then they leave typically when all the classes end. So, the staff in and outs do not actually conflict with the cars getting in and out of the site. So by having the staff park at the entrance, it would minimize the chance of, you know, cars trying to get in and out of those parking spaces. So, just to describe the drop-off period in the morning, so cars would come in, there's two traffic wardens or attendants, one, they will be stationed at the two red dots. So as the cars come in on the right-hand side, the traffic warden would direct the parents to go toward the left and park in zone A. Okay? And then, what I've observed was that the students, after the parents come in, the students actually just get out of the car, say bye to their mom and dad, slam the door, and they walk in. And the parents, probably within 10 seconds, they pull out and they leave. So drop-off is actually not a big concern. I mean, I drop off my, my eighth grade son every day at school, he gets out of the car and I leave within three seconds. I can't wait to leave because I have to get to work. So, I don't think the problem is that, I mean, during the drop-off, it's not really a main concern. Pickup typically, what happens is that parents do come a little bit, some come a little bit earlier, and they, because classes, the class has not ended yet, so they have to wait in the parking spot, or, and that's one of the reasons why they can't queue.
That makes sense.
Because there's only a capacity for 10 cars. So the moment you have 11 parents queuing up, you're on the street.
That makes sense.
Okay? So that's why we have them parking, so they will be directed, the ones who come first will be directed to park in zone A, and if there's any additional, they will park in zone B. Okay? I did a very detailed analysis, so there's 160 students. First of all, there are three class starting times and three class ending times. So the parents are already sort of divided roughly about one-third, one-third, one-third. And number two is that the existing school has a very, very, very good traffic management plan. For example, the shuttle, the shuttle vans or the shuttle service that Devin was sharing, there's currently 42 students who are taking the shuttle vans. So that's already a reduction of roughly about 42 private car trips. And we anticipate that the, the same number of students, or maybe even more, would continue to take the shuttle vans. There's also 38 existing students who carpool, and that also significantly reduces the number of private cars. So based on my analysis, if you look at the three staggered time periods, there's only about 32 private cars for the 8:00 AM, and then in the afternoon, the 3:00 PM class time period. And then for the second staggered time period, there's about 28 private cars, and the third period is also about 28 private cars. So that alone, because of the really good traffic management program, it's not really 160 private cars, if you know what I mean. It's really a very, very small percentage of that amount. And we used the existing observations, the arrival and departure profile from the existing school, conducted the arrival and departure analysis, and determined that the maximum number of parking spaces, the parking demand during the drop-off, it's only about 17 spaces. Now, you may think it's, like, you may think, well, that doesn't seem right, but if you think about it, just keep in mind that there are 32 private cars for the first staggered period, but based on my observations, the parents arrive within a 30-minute period, so it's only really about one car per minute. I mean, sometimes they may be two or three cars, I mean, because there's fluctuations, but it's not like 30 cars are coming in all within a three-minute period, if you know what I mean. For the pickup period, based on our analysis, there was a maximum parking demand of 35 spaces. Okay? And that includes private cars, the van pool, and also the staff parking. And so the parking supply is 47 parking spots, so we determined that the onsite parking would be adequate.
Yeah, that's excellent. That's very thorough. I appreciate it matches. I actually calculated it myself, and it matches pretty close. And so I totally agree with that. I think the secret here is your flexibility to do the staggered start, so kudos to you for doing that. The other thing is the, your parents in the carpooling, I think that's the other part of it. So, keeping that going, incentives, whatever incentives you can do to keep that going, that's, that's, I think those two things make this whole thing actually work perfectly. So, great, that's, that's all I was concerned about. Thanks so much.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind. So that area has a cul-de-sac, it's only one way in and one way out. Are the parents, they're allowed to park on the street? Yes? In that, no, there's no parking on the street?
I mean, there is.
It's, I mean, it's public right of way.
No, there's, there's no parking on the street. All of it is onsite parking.
No, I meant, I meant, it is public, so they can, but they're not encouraged to.
It is public, I guess people can park there. I mean, I've seen cars parked out there, but it's not part of what Togethership is going to do, and they're going to instruct all the parents at the start of each school year, kind of like the code of ethics for parking.
This is how you do it.
And they have to come in, and they have to pull in, and they have to park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay. We're open for public comments. I have a couple speaker cards, which I will call out if there are others of you that would like to speak. Please fill out a speaker card and hand it up front here, and we'll call your name. So reminder, three minutes. When the light comes on, you have one minute left of your time. First speaker is Kerry Husbands, followed by Kirby Ellis.
Thank you. I'm Kerry Husbands, 2029 via Aguilay, here in San Clemente. I'm the proud, I'm wearing a few hats tonight. I'm a proud mother of two recent Togethership graduates, one who's here tonight, he's now going to be a junior at San Clemente, and he was hungry walking in, and all the talk of in and out and primos, I think now, I know what we're getting for dinner right after this. And my daughter would be here tonight, but she's at basketball practice, and she just recently graduated from eighth grade. So speaking as a mother, this school has been nothing but phenomenal, the standard of excellence across the board in terms of academics, athletics, citizenship. What Devin has done and his staff has done has been absolutely amazing. Speaking from a traffic standpoint, I was a shuttle user, and we also carpool to the shuttle, so, you know, we, we, we parents find a way. Unbelievable school, cannot recommend it more than enough, and thrilled beyond belief that it's coming to San Clemente. I wish it had come before my children got graduated, as we were getting them up to Lake Forest repeatedly. Switching hats, I'm the head varsity girls' basketball coach at San Clemente High School. So, as a representative of the athletic department, I would like to say, having Togethership here in our backyard is, it's just a natural extension of what we're already doing at San Clemente High School. I don't know if you're aware, but our high school was recently named top 20, number 25 in the state as top athletic departments in the state of California. That's encompassing every size school, public, private, that is tremendous and says so much about our school and our community. Not only that, every single varsity sport received academic distinction this year, which is, speaks to just the fact that when you create solid students and great athletes and set that standard high, we're creating just, not only wonderful human beings, but the citizenship and the leadership and the excellence and the standard that we want to hold our children to, that is what we're producing at our athletic department. So speaking as a coach, to have Togethership here in our community is just, it's just the next best thing that we need to do to continue that, that level of athleticism, academic citizenship, and excellence coming into our school and promoting it within our community. There's a huge need for it, and I'm just thrilled that I'm a part of it, just, or I was a part of it as a parent, and now I'm thrilled that with them coming to San Clemente, hopefully, go girls' basketball and all the other sports, we get more of that excellence coming into, to our high school. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kerry. Kirby Ellis.
Hi, Kirby Ellis. I'm a father of someone that's gone there for two years. His name's Preston, and I couldn't be more thrilled about that school. I'm also somebody that is a carpool dad, so I can share with you that his, Jonathan's findings are very accurate. There is no queuing on the street. Most schools, I see the, kind of the cluster around schools, but the way that Devin has set up the parking and the flow-through, and did, did actually tell us how he wanted this whole thing to work at the beginning of the year at the property that we're in in Lake Forest, and it, it works well. That morning is just a drop-off. My kid can't get out of the car fast enough and not have his dad, you know, "Bye, I love you." He doesn't want to hear that. So, but in the, in the afternoon, even where we are now, and currently where we are now, there isn't a staggered ending, and we have many less parking spots than this. There is, I can, I can just assure you, there's no problem. So what he's doing to try to set it up to even be more flow-through, and the efforts that he's going through, as a parent, I would appreciate that and all that. Can't talk enough about the school and the experience that I've had as a, as a, as a proud father. My son's in the basketball program there. I don't know if you I don't know if you actually heard much about the school. I'm sure it's in your package there. But the, the academics are, are amazing. And then also, my son gets four types of preparation for sports in the future. He gets his basketball course as basically one of his electives, you know, in order to help define that. He gets speed and agility, which is very important for any athlete. And so they go, they work for, I think it's two hours, two times a week, on their speed and agility. He gets a weight, weight training class. My son started there in seventh grade. And I can tell you that the coaches that are watching over young seventh graders, they do an amazing job at understanding what the kids should be doing and what they shouldn't be doing in the weight, in the weight room. And then there's, there's, he, he has a, it's a, it's a guy in the military that teaches the leadership. So, you know, in athlete, in athletics, you need to have leadership skills. And Devin has brought in a Navy SEAL. And one of my son's classes is to get a leadership class with, from a Navy SEAL. It's unbelievable. And what that tends to lead to is, is, is how my son is at home, how he treats other adults. I always get complimented by other adults when my son goes there. And I feel a lot of that comes from that class. So that's hitting me. You can hear it in my voice. It's real important. And then the other is nutrition. Okay, so there, he's got a nutrition coach that gets these kids ready for their nutritional needs. They count their calories because they're out there using a lot of calories. I'm going to end up by saying my son's in a basketball, a club basketball league. And on, on any given weekend, when, when the, the rest of the kids on his team are running out of gas, my son is still in the fourth quarter, running at full speed. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Devin.
Thank you, Kirby. Randy Reynard.
Randy Reynard, I'm the president of Reynard Corporation, which is going to be next door neighbor in the building right next door. Just wanted to bring up some, some thoughts. I have no problem with the program. That's fine. Addressing the parking is a concern. I have essentially two, two traffic patterns coming in, 6:30 in the morning and 8:00 AM. What I didn't hear is the stop times. And I'd like to understand what those stop times are. Because I know I have, I've had nine years of middle school for my kids. They just ended. And I know on the pickup times, parents wait. And, you know, I can, I can imagine people on the parking, in the parking area, waiting outside to come in to pick up their kids when class is over. So.
Three, three thirty and four, and there's the 45-minute.
Three thirty four. Okay, so starting at three?
Yeah, and there's time for them to wait for their kid to pick them up.
Okay. And then what I'd like to understand is, is all this traffic pattern is based on existing facilities? Understanding what the capacity of 160 for this one, is that what the current capacity is?
It's 135.
135?
With one start time.
With one start time, okay. So it'll be a little bit more. And then any outside activities going on? So everything is contained?
Yes.
Okay. I know that building, I looked at buying it. It's not laid out well for many businesses. I think it would work well for you. I've been through it. So congratulations on that. The biggest concern that I have is the traffic pattern on the corner of Cae Sombra and Amonteser. That's an area that's prone to accidents. I've almost gotten hit before. I've had employees that have been in accidents in that section. So that's when you're leaving Cae Sombra and essentially making a left on, on Amonteser. It's a, it's a, it's sort of a blind intersection where cars are coming up quick up off of Amonteser. And it's hard to see around that corner, especially in that open lot when those weeds are growing. I'd like that to be considered, since it is a big concern for accidents. And especially with this many traffic and buses or vans coming in and out of that facility. That's a big concern. Just my thoughts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Chair, the applicant has three minutes for rebuttal if they would like it.
Okay. Mr. Applicant, would you like to rebut anything that the commenters made?
I know we studied all those streets like a bunch of times.
Yeah, so, so we did study six external intersections. One of them is the one at the corner. Based on, I mean, just based on the traffic operations point of view, with the addition of the project traffic, it's still operating at an acceptable level of service. And the city considers acceptable being level of service D or better. I believe that one was, it's EDRAS. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it might be even a C. But it's considered a, a good, good level of service. But I overheard something about maybe trimming. Is it like a bush or a tree or some sort? That sounds more like it's just vegetation maintenance, not so much improvement of the intersection, if you know what I mean. Because it's really just to improve the line of sight, right, for cars to turn left. Yeah, so, yeah, that's all I have.
I do, one thing I want to say too is just, being a good neighbor is like a big part of the, the program and teaching the kids. And so like, working with the neighbors, even if that means maybe we've got to move the start time or the end time a little bit, I'm willing to, to do whatever it takes to, to make the neighbor, like, the last thing I'm trying to do is move in and make the neighbors not happy. But also too, in terms of the kids that are at the school and, and the families, it's very, discipline is a very big part of what we do. And so just in terms of like, telling the families to enter off, hey, you got to come in off La Pata, make a right turn there off Sombra, come around, drop your kid off. And when you leave, you got to go right off of Sombra down to Amonteser and exit that way. I wouldn't be, I would have no problem telling the families that. And I believe that they would listen very intently if that, especially if we told them why we were, we were doing that. But I think that they would be more than willing to make it work.
Thank you.
So if you have any more questions, go ahead. But if you're, if the commission is done with their questions, then you would close the public hearing and then debate.
Okay. I, I think we, I have a comment on what the traffic engineer said, which is, he was discussing level of service at that intersection, but the complaint was about site distance. So it didn't really address the, the raised complaint. But with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for commissioner discussion. Please.
Great planning, really good. We're, you know, we're, I think we're all excited about the project. But we're here mostly to look at the planning and the location. And I think you guys have done a great job. I don't usually understand traffic engineers. And I understood what you were saying. That was great. So my, my commendations to you, this, I think, is great planning in terms of the way cities should function. You have properties that, you know, they're not perfect. There's, it's like, there's, you're not going to find a perfect location. But I think what you guys did is you've, you found the best location you could, and you made it work without having to, you know, shuttle people from another property or whatever. So, great job. I'm definitely in support of the project. I think you came well-prepared. It'd be great if you had an outdoor playground, but obviously that's.
There's a baking lawn next door, so.
Okay, there is a spot here in the back. I don't know what that's, it says limited ac, or restricted access. So that's, that is for student use, I assume, or is that?
I don't think I'm going to let students out there.
My, my son goes to the school in Lake Forest. There is no outdoor, there is, there's no outdoor. They're inside, in the, in the basketball court area constantly or in the weight room. They're, they're right now where we are. There is no outside, so.
Okay. No, so, I mean, it'd be nice, but it's adequate, it seems it's adequate.
The fire authority has limited the use of that area to.
Oh, okay, okay.
They said it really shouldn't have been approved with the building in the first place, you know, with that area, because you have to go through the building in an emergency to get out. Because there's no other way. So we're, we had to actually cut the area down in terms of not as much square footage for patio area and, and keep the occupant load less than 50 in there.
Okay. And I know you'll get, you know, you'll get into this with building and safety. But all the classrooms are on the second floor.
There's one on the, one on the bottom floor.
Oh, there is? Okay, so equal facilitation. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm totally for the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other commissioner discussion?
I, I just want to echo, I'm in support. I can make the required findings, and so I'm supportive.
Anyone else?
I will say, I've been convinced on the project, and I'm very impressed. And I want to thank, thank staff and Laura and the applicant for putting together a very good packet for us review and. Very good. I will remember that. And I, I want to compliment her on particularly, is the applicant comfortable with all the conditions of approval? Because per our previous one, if you look at 17 and 18, that's what I was kind of alluding to. 717, 7718 is what we didn't have on the previous one that we were looking for. Very good. And I went through a bunch of athletic camps as a kid, and I loved it. So.
Why didn't we have this school when we were kids? That's, that's my biggest.
It wasn't, I went to a camp that John Wooden put on. And he was such a great mentor to the kids, and I got to work at his summer camps. And it made all the difference in a lot of kids' lives. So I am in support of the project.
Is that a support in the form of a motion?
I'll go ahead and make, I'll go ahead and make a motion. First, I want to just say, make all the required findings that the proposed use is permitted within the subject zone and, along with the conditions of approval. The site suitable for type and intensity that's proposed. It's also not going to be detrimental to public health or safety or welfare. And it will not negatively impact the surrounding land use issues. So with that, I will move the staff recommendations that, number one, we determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the CEQA, Persuading to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301. And number two, approving conditional use permit 22-398, togetherness Holistic Sports Academy, subject to the conditions of approval here in the staff report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven zero. Congratulations and good luck.
Welcome to San Clemente. Thank you all for staying so late. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Go get a burger.
Come on.
But they agree for all you do, for our cities. It's really commendable, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, here comes Chris.
There goes all the fun. All the fun of the room.
Commissioners.
Well, hang on just a second.
Before we move on, commissioners, I just want to state for the record, there is the 10-day appeal period for that item as well.
You know, my feeling is I'm pretty comfortable with what he's prepared and think we could.
Commissioners, the meeting is still occurring. And if we would like to discuss items, we should stick to the ones that are on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to take a five-minute break, or do we want to press on?
Let's just tackle it, if everybody wants to do it.
So, well, let's take, let's, I think there's some break. Let's take a, let's take a five-minute break and return at 8:40.
To work on other things. And a part of that is to change our staff level review of development type projects from what's known as a staff waiver to an administrative development permit. The goal of that is to make our, our process objective versus discretionary. And that's something that we're trying to do to meet state law where if it's a staff level process, it's, um, it's supposed to be more objective. The last bucket are some streamlining items that we've spent the majority share of our meetings discussing. And we've made a number of changes since the last meeting. I'll summarize some of the key points, but understand you're going to have questions and want to go through the document. And then I'll close with the recommendation. So I have one slide, this is a quick presentation, just to give you a high level overview of some of the changes that we made. The first, there were a number of comments from commissioners to maintain public hearings with regard to single family homes and duplexes across the street from historic buildings. And if you want to develop to four dwelling units, um, visible from a historic building, that, that would remain at 300 feet. We were talking about going down to 120 feet into parcels. It would stay at 300 feet. And instead of the initial proposal to go to a staff level review, it would now be a zoning administrator review. And that was a number of comments that we received, so we've done that. Uh, the next item are related to the administrative development permits. There's a number of criteria that relate to that type of application. And we went through each of the type of project types and the criteria that would have to be met to approve an administrative development permit. We've gone through and made the revisions, um, the best we can to address your comments. The last three items were more discussed at the last meeting, of which we were given direction to follow up, study and consider some changes. And we have on these three bullets. So I'll just touch on that. The story pools, uh, we did clarify the language on the installation of story pools to simplify more, where it was just talking about the, the, is more ambiguous in framing what the outer envelope of the building is. We've narrowed that down to clarify and simplify the installation of story pools. Uh, seasonal sales, the proposal is to increase the provision of those from 45 days to 55 days. That was already a staff level process. And then special activities, we were asked to consider some changes that might allow businesses to have some more special activities, but ensure if they're in proximity to residential uses, that there be public notice. So, um, these changes actually clarify an ambiguity that staff has talked about for some time. When you look at the code, it, it says one day event, a one day activity. And you can have up to 15 days in a year. Uh, when you look at the table, it's not that clear whether staff can approve multiple one day events or is it just one day? So we're clarifying that it's multiple one days and then accounting for the fact that a lot of businesses want a weekend event, then we would be upping that to allow up to a two day event at a staff level review. But you, to add something, you cannot have more than, you would have to have at least five day, these, five days between activities. So that, what that means is you couldn't have an event on like a weekend and haven't one before the next weekend. It would have to be spaced out by the weekends. And it would still be capped at 15 days per year. Um, if you had a three to three day events or more, that would go, continue to a public hearing. Uh, we would be adding a notification requirement. So if you wanted to do a, an event in a residential area, like a church, for example, that sometimes happens, or a mixed use zone, then you would have to do a notification to the property owners than 300 feet. And that would help in staff's view because if you send out a notice, the neighbors are informed of the event. And if there was some issue with the event, staff could be notified of it. And that could be considered for any proposal to do another event. That would be grounds to review the, the next event. Uh, so that concludes, I think, like the main ticket items that we spent more of our share talking about on this ordinance, but I'm happy to go through in more detail. I, I know that there'll be questions. To conclude, staff recommends adopting a resolution to find that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA and recommends city council to adopt the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Chris. Do, um, did we already open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions for staff?
Question for, I do have a question. When you went, try page D nine. And 10, talking about the approval decision process.
Chair and commissioners, if we could, just for the record, if we could note that there's nobody here to speak on the item from the public.
Okay. There's nobody here to speak on the item in the public, except we do have a letter that I intend to read after Commissioner Comps' questions.
Yes, and I, I'm willing to read that letter into the record if you'd like.
Okay.
And I'm willing to hold this until we open for discussion rather than, we'll do question, answer.
Question and discussion at the same time. Okay, I'm fine with that. Um, would you like to read this into the record, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, I've got a copy, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, this letter is from Larry Culbertson. And it is addressed to the San Clemente Planning Commission. Uh, it is on, uh, it is on behalf of the San Clemente Historical Society with Larry Culbertson identifying as the president. Uh, dear planning commissioners, the historical society's concern regarding zoning amendment 22 dash 366 has not diminished since our letter of February 15th. Despite city staff's explanations, we believe that this amendment would be a step backward in the long march toward providing protection for San Clemente's historic resources and enhancing the village, village character we all cherish. Of the 16 proposed permit streamlining items in attachment one of the staff report, eight would affect historic resources or the projects within 300 feet of them. The effect would be less protection for those historic resources and the neighborhoods around them. It is important to remember that our municipal code requires that we protect not only our historic resources, but also our entire city's identity as a Spanish, as a Spanish village. The following is municipal code, uh, section 17, uh, 16, 100A, 1B, cultural heritage permit, purpose and intent. The purpose and intent of the architectural review with a cultural heritage emphasis is to provide for the review of projects affecting the city's cultural and/or historical resources. Along with the general goals for architectural review provided above, the process is intended to, and the letter bolds the next, uh, sentence. One, preserve and strengthen San Clemente's historic identity as a Spanish village. Two, preserve and strengthen the pedestrian oriented areas designated in the general plan as such. Three, preserve and protect those places, sites, buildings, structures, neighborhoods, objects and improvements, manmade or natural, having a special historical, cultural or architectural interest. Four, protect and enhance the city's attraction as a historic community to tourists and visitors. Five, promote the use of historic properties for the education, pleasure and welfare of the people of the city. Uh, that's the end of that section. The proposed changes to the decision levels would be a disaster. Errors have occurred over the years with the existing staff waiver process. To rename the process administrative development permit and then give one individual even more responsibility, just about guarantees even more errors. The combination of the design review subcommittee review followed by the scrutiny of the seven member planning commission has guaranteed high quality results with San Clemente discretionary projects for decades. Although not required, it seems we have historically had a, at least half of the commissioners be experienced architects. The idea of turning over any of the decision making process of important projects to a zoning administrator or city planner of unknown experience and talent does not sound wise. The established criteria for what we, for what are important projects have worked well and do not need to be rewritten. It is interesting how little interest the public has demonstrated for streamlining. Over the past year, only two letters, your attachment seven, have been submitted. Neither was supportive of the proposed amendment. It would seem that, that no one is unhappy with the existing zoning code or decision making process. Please just leave it as, as be. In closing, I urge you not to relinquish any of the decision, the decision making responsibilities you have to staff and to not downgrade the quality of protection afforded to our historic resources in the existing zoning code. Sincerely, Larry Culbertson, President.
Thank you, Mr. Otamium, and thank you, Mr. Culbertson. Let's, I would say have, kind of combine questions and discussion together. So I'm open to all discussion points?
Uh, yeah, I've been, I concentrated on the redlined set, so. My first, on the decision making process, um, just wanted to clarify a couple of things. No DRSC or cultural heritage subcommittee, uh, items are listed on any of those decision making processes. I know they're, DRSC is a recommending body, but it's a step that has to be taken to make, get the decisions done. So as an outsider looking at our code, um, that would be a surprise to me if I say, okay, we're going through, um, process three. And I've got a project, it's not here under process three that you'd have to go to either of those bodies. You think they should be listed? You might put a footnote or something under this, the list of these, that that's a possibility? Asterisk, or an asterisk or something?
Good idea.
Sure. Just so it's not a surprise to the applicants. I don't think we want to do a page flip on this, so I'll just bring up the ones that I had comment on.
Commissioner Crandall.
Yeah.
If I could just clarify that last comment. In the decision making section, there is reference, um, under the, under the first paragraph that describes that, that new section, which identifies the, the.
Let's see where.
Decision processes.
Find that again.
Are you on page?
I'm on page D nine.
D nine, okay.
Middle of that paragraph, um, under 1712060, decision process, it says, depending on the proposal, the review process may also require review by an advisory body such as the design review subcommittee. Um, if you would like something, another warn, basically another warning included, some direction.
You think the cultural heritage subcommittee should also be included in there?
I do.
Just as a heads up.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, we're not disagreeing with that. I think the way that this sentence reads is that there are potentially other reviewing bodies that, that, that may spring up. I don't know that listing every single one, this is, it, this is meant to be in, the designer subcommittee is meant as an example of a type of additional body.
The first thing we do whenever we get a project in architecture, we go a, a code search and see what we got to do. And if it's not clearly there, we can miss things and, um, not identify them. So, you know, the clearer it is, the better, so.
Yes, and if you would like to, um, if your recommendation is for staff to.
I'd let everybody.
Kind of clean that up or, or expand upon that, that we're more than happy to, to do that.
Couldn't hurt.
But if there's a specific, there's like a specific thing that you're looking to have added, um, that would help. At, at this point, staff, in writing what we wrote, this was, this clarified it enough for us, but if, if the planning commission believes that.
I'd probably put the cultural heritage subcommittee in there also.
If you have a new planner or a new administrator, it would benefit, it would benefit me if it was listed in there.
I think mainly for the outsiders, applicants that don't know anything.
That's exactly right, yeah. And then, um, I've always been concerned, and I know we've talked about this probably way too much, um, on the, uh, zoning administrator should, decision two.
That process, process.
That can include all sorts of things, including some historic properties, et cetera. And it's appealable direct to city council, who are not as current in any of those items as the planning commission. I know we're trying to eliminate a step here, but if something is appealed, it's going to be a project that didn't get zoning administrator approval, probably. So there's concerns, and then why bother city council with that? It should probably go to commission and get a thorough one. If it is something that got approved, that the public wants to appeal, or an individual, um, I, I see that there may not be enough information, um, or education for city council to really review those properly.
Well, I could, I could see where council might want the planning commission to weigh in to kind of.
That's what I'm thinking. It just seems the appeal process, I understand on some that, um, I can't think of an example right now, but we get formal training every year, every two years on historic or planning commission issues and zoning issues. And city council doesn't necessarily get that. And I think we might be a better body to have appeal to first than city council.
Yeah, my response on that is the city council will delegate authority to the planning commission. And so we did not include changes to the appeals process. It's, if, if there's interest in that, staff would suggest making that as part of the rec, the motion, but we were reluctant to put changes in the draft to the appeals process, given that the city council will need to make that decision on whether to change the appeals process.
Okay.
And, and changing the appeals process can be more than one thing. Like it might be, there's been talk before about the fee, it might be the process or, you know, who reviews the appeal. So, um, you know, I'm not sure if there's support, a majority support for that or not, but that, that would be our recommendation to make that, um, part of the motion to forward comments to the council, if there's support for such.
Okay, and then, um, let's go to jump all the way up to D 58.
Okay.
This is, let's go to new residential buildings. Uh, new residential primary buildings goes through, um, commission, correct? Process three. New residential accessory building screened from adjoining rights away, yada, yada, yada. Um, process two. I'd like to see maybe we put in the caveat that that's applications that are requesting no exceptions.
On number four?
Uh, C.
Oh, C.
C two on page D 58. Uh, it says new residential accessory building screened from adjoining public right away with less than or equal to 500 square feet with less than 50% of the primary building floor area, as long as they're not asking for exceptions.
Uh, I would suggest, um, to do something like that, to, um, change the wording to equal to 500 square feet, comma, less than, um, or in less than 50% of the primary's building floor area and complies with zoning standards.
That would be fine, too. That, that works fine.
And that, that condition is only for review process for cultural heritage permit? So that's only if we're adjacent to historic, right? Okay.
Is that only, is that concern only for the culture heritage permit?
Uh, yeah, it's on basically table 1716110.
Cause there's the development permit and the culture heritage permit. So I just want to be clear, is this something?
Well, isn't this whole chart relating all to cultural heritage permit?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is for culture, this would be for historic resources.
Right. I'm concerned about those more than.
Okay, got it.
I think staff can do the, the other ones.
Okay.
I ran out of tabs. And, and all those, all those. I think that was, um, pretty much the, Major, you did a good job on getting through all our other items, I believe.
Thank you.
But I agree with, um, uh, the historical society's comments that, you know, I don't want to relinquish, um, what's been working for the historic structures. Everything else I'm confident with that we've gone through.
Okay, other comments?
Yeah, can we just stay on that one point and just try and finish it? The concerns in the letter? Okay, so, I, to address the letter, are we back to page, uh, D 58, D 59? Right? And, um, so wherever it says, uh, process two, we, that's the change, right? Process two is the zoning administrator, so anywhere where we see process two, we should just talk about it and make sure that we think about the le, letter from Larry and go, is that okay?
So concentrate on table 1716110?
Yes, right back where you were.
So that could be an asterisk or a footnote.
Well, I'm just thinking, we just go wherever it says process two and just go, is that a change that is what Larry's talking about? For example, A, new non-residential buildings, public park facilities, uh, I would say that probably does not apply, so we could leave that as process two. Uh, the next one is new, number four, A four, new non-residential accessory building screened from adjoining public right away where the proposed building has a floor area less than, equal to 500 square feet and, uh, less than 50% of the primary building floor area. So this would be, uh, I think, an area that could. Can you talk about that one, Christopher, this one, the not, new non-resident? I'm on the fence on whether that would apply to, as a change to what Larry's talking about. It might not, but, cause it's non-residential, so I'm, I'm kind of thinking that one might be okay.
Yeah, it's, just to be clear here, so the, on, for the culture heritage permit.
Yep.
The one item that would pertain to the letter is C two. There's no other changes proposed that would reduce hearing levels.
C two.
Yeah.
Which we just discussed.
Yes, so the idea behind this is if you go to D one.
Yep.
This exists, and other than adding the language about the 50%, because we're actually trying to be more protective of historic buildings and not just frame it by square footage. Um, but if you go by D one, you could see it's a zoning administrator process to add up to, to add less than 500 square feet to a historic building.
Yeah.
Currently. The idea behind C two is that you would be able to do a similar sized, uh, accessory building, and that might mean it, it's attached or detached, but it's of a similar size with additional limitations, that it has to be screened. So, is that?
Yeah, and I think we're saying that it's also meets all the zoning.
Yes.
Code now. So let's, I want to just talk about this in a more abstract. My understanding is currently if any historical building, um, is changed, that goes through the cultural heritage permit process, or is there changes they could make that don't?
There's changes you can make that don't.
Like the minor ones, right? The landscaping, walkways, that kind of thing.
And in addition, less than 500 square.
Yeah, not, not roofing, that kind of thing. Okay. And that, you're not, you're not proposing that change?
No, so.
I know, just recapping to, to make sure we're covering the latter.
No, so like the scope of this permit, the only change is that, is that you can add less than 500 square feet, whether it's in addition to the historic primary building or it's like a garage that's attached or detached. It's still the same size.
Okay.
It's just that if it's an accessory building, it has to be screened from the street. That's the, we're just trying to treat, treat the size of a project the same regardless if it's attached or detached.
All right, and so the, the current guidelines apply then to that review?
Yes.
So, Chris, for an example, if somebody wanted to add, if it's a, if it's looking at D one, this is an addition. If somebody added a 500 square foot addition for a garage that was not a detached accessory structure, but it was incorporated onto the building, they would have to go through, they could go through a zoning administrator now.
No.
On D one, residential building additions of less than 500 square feet?
They cannot. So this is, the problem that we've been having is if, is you have the primary building, the house, and then if you have an accessory space, like a garage or a shed or a workroom, that's a, a, a new building, even if it's attached to the house.
Right.
So you look at it, it might look like an addition, but if it's a garage, it's classified differently under our current code. It says any new building has to go to the planning commission. We've had people that want to add a small little storage building, um, and it might even be detached from the historic building, and we have to tell them, you have to go to the planning commission.
Yeah, so that's, maybe the garage is the wrong, wrong example. If somebody wants to add 499 square feet to a historic building, they could do that through a zoning administrator right now.
Correct.
If they originally came in and said, I want to add, I want to create a 499 square foot detached building that does not affect the existing historic structure, that's planning commission.
Correct.
So then they could say, oh, it's, it's easier if I just simply modify the existing So then they could say, oh, it's it's easier if I just simply modify the existing historic structure by adding it. We are just trying to make those two processes easier, so which would actually incentivize somebody to ma- keep a detached structure detached. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. I think that's a good incentive. The other thing, I guess, is the three hundred foot rule. That's what's changing. So if there, if it's a non-historical building, but there, so it's just, it's just non-historical and it's located within three hundred feet of a historical building, that rule is changing, right?
Um, let's go to page D D forty-five to answer the that question. So simply put, no, we would be keeping the three hundred foot rule.
Okay.
The commission had said they wanted to retain that and public hearings to ensure uh public notice is maintained and there be uh public participation. So the the changes you'll see is gonna be um there, there's more than one on this page. So I guess let's take it one by one.
You're on forty-five?
Yes. I just want to make sure I don't miss one.
Yeah, C five.
Okay, so the
First one.
The first one is A four.
Oh, so that's page forty-four?
Yes, forty-four.
Okay.
So I think you're gonna see a theme. It's it's very similar to what we just talked about. This idea of whether it's an addition or it's a separate building. That that there's more than one change like that. This is another one. So if you want to do any new non-residential building, currently has to go to the planning commission. What the proposal here is saying that if it's an accessory building that's screened from adjoining public right of way and it's less than two thousand square feet, then that would be zoning administrator process.
And this is, but this is non-residential.
Non-residential.
Yeah.
So the, and if you, just like an addition, the addition can be less than two thousand square feet, and that goes to the zoning administrator. So we're just, we're doing something very similar here where the uh an accessory building that is the same maximum size that you can do for a zoning administrator view addition, they would be treated the same. That makes sense?
And this is for, these are for nonhistoric properties?
Correct. This is like architectural overlay. It's um it could be adjacent to a historic building within three hundred feet of a historic building. But again, it's non-residential.
Yeah. I think I'm more concerned about C five where it's new residential primary building on properties that are not abutting, but located within three hundred feet.
Yes, so C four and five were originally proposed to be a staff level review. And the planning commission said that they didn't like that idea, that we were going to keep it at zoning administrator at least. That was C four and five. We had language, we've simplified this to to go to Z A. Cause we kept the three hundred feet.
Gotcha. You heard us and you put it to the Z A. Okay.
Yeah, we kept the three hundred feet. Um, so.
But this is Larry's letter is even speaking to that. So what can we do to mitigate, to address his concern with four and five?
Yeah, my response to that is C four and five, they were proposed from the start because in staff's view, there's not the same potential for public impact or concern. Uh, you're talking about at least there being a hundred feet of separation between a historic building and a proposed building across the street. So you're, it's a hundred feet to two hundred ninety-nine feet away. So that means they would have to meet the zoning standards. There's, in staff's view, there's no way that they could have any massing impact on the historic property. And if they go to the zoning administrator, they're still going to have to be consistent with the design guidelines, so.
And the Z A can't bump it up.
Yes, or the city planner.
Can't believe, or can it?
So one of the changes is that the city planner would be authorized to push it up to the planning commission now if they wanted.
Plus the R S C, even with process two.
Yes.
Would a process two can go to D R S C?
It can. The city planner, if they determine that the project, say, there's a.
But that's a, that's a call they have to make, right?
Yes.
It's not automatic.
That's right.
Could the.
But that's similar to the current process.
Yes, it's similar.
Okay, okay.
Would there be one more level just for the planning commission? Could the planning commission have a list, if they asked for it, from the zoning administrator? Monthly before a planning commission to see what is in review?
Uh, we, we circulate the tentative future agenda to the planning commission. And that's early heads up of what projects are even going to be scheduled.
Scheduled.
To the zoning.
For the historic, they, I was specifically.
Come on us to look at those. Cause we do, basically.
So there would be an opportunity if the planning commission saw an item where there's some questions you could inquire with the city planner and there's opportunity to bump it up if something came up.
And outside of codification of of an amendment, we can, we could work with the planning commission to provide you whatever information you would like about lower level discretionary approvals as 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 those determinations are made. It could be included in the agenda in a in a similar fashion, just as an kind of an F Y I to how um how we uh we agendize the the minutes from the zoning administrator and the planning commission for the city council's agenda on a regular basis. We could do we could always do something similar like that to keep the planning commission apprised of historic related approvals of a lower discretionary nature.
Any, any objection to that?
I just want to, can we use any some examples? If we take the D R S C last, the last meeting where we had three historic properties come through, three, three, one, three, it just happened to be all three, you know, three different ones.
Yeah.
Which one of those would not have come through? Uh, if we, if this is adopted?
I think all three of them involved a, oh, the Goldschmidt residence was a addition at the rear of the building.
Yeah.
And the city planner determined that it should go, they they elected to have it go to the subcommittee.
Okay.
Not because necessarily there was an item of concern because it met the design guidelines, it met all the standards in staff's view, just because it was a national landmark and we wanted to give additional opportunity for comment. So that that's an example.
So is that something we should make a rule in here? Cause if you had a staff person in the future that just didn't feel that way, or?
This uh actually cycles back to the last time we did a streamlining ordinance uh where we talked about when projects should go to the subcommittee. And the longtime precedent is what is in the code. It's generally planning commission level decisions go to
I see.
Automatic. And then there's.
Okay. So the other two property, other two projects would come, still come through?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what we're saying is if it's across the street, it's going to go to the Z A. Be publicly noticed, but it's gonna, and and does it, and does, and has to conform with zoning and guidelines.
Correct.
If it doesn't, will it go to D R S C?
Yes, it's in the code that.
And then if it's next door, it's going to D R S C?
No, if if it's next door and it meets all the standards, it's not an automatic. We're, we're talking right now if it's less than a five hundred square foot addition, that's, there's no proposed changes.
Okay, no, I'm talking about something bigger than that. It's over that.
Okay, then it would be planning commission.
Okay.
And that would go to the.
So really, the only time we're talking about is five hundred or less. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Bart, do you feel like we've met then?
I think.
The intention here?
Met the intent.
Okay. Okay, great.
Can I speak to one more item in the letter? Just to, cause there are some, there's also comments about sixteen types of projects and administrative development permit and um.
Well, just because we got this on, doesn't mean we have to address everything.
I, okay, I don't have to.
I think we.
If you have something on your mind, go ahead, share.
If you want to.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that one of the the aims of these changes is to make our staff level process more objective.
Yes.
And by making it objective, it reduces the risk of errors and a less trained staff person to make decisions that may be more of potential public concern for historic resources. So not only are we doing that for state law purposes to make it a more objective process, but in staff's view, this is more protective of historic resources, what we're proposing.
Yeah, I agree. And I think the standards that you have proposed are detailed and they're, they're, they're good. And that we don't have those, so those are new. Can I ask you, just for the record, I've gotten questions about certain things I want it on the record for clarification. I already know the answer, but I'm just, if you can just quickly just answer coastal review and concept, uh, that process is not being changed by any of these changes. Is that correct?
Correct.
That remains unchanged. Uh, okay. And then the, a short term vacation rental, those rules aren't, in fact, aren't being changed either?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I had.
Just, just an observation.
Anyone else?
At some point, we're going to get our local coastal plan certified. In these approval processes, would it save us time and energy under these approvals to mention that as? How should I put it? Um, when we talk about the approvals that we'll be looking at guidelines that and the local coastal plan, one approved, so we don't have to go through this process again to insert that in a bunch of places. So you don't have to go back and revisit it when it occurs.
There will be a a quite large zoning amendment. Uh, excuse me, it's.
Isn't it going to be a standalone section?
It's going to be a standalone section. It will be zoning related, so I'll, I'll, I'll call it a zoning amendment. Uh, that's going to be much larger than simply inserting that kind of language into this.
No time saved.
No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, that will be addressed when the implementation plan is is adopted and we have a essentially a new title of the code that regulates zoning, just in the coastal zone.
That'll be a bigger uh planning commission packet than this one.
I have a, I have a question.
First, no, it's because.
For all you, for everybody up here, I, I don't, this whole streamlining label has not flowed with me. I don't feel it's accurate. I feel like that would be something a little different. Is, would you, would you all, what I'd like to do is when this goes to councils, we ask for, that we change the name to call it permit consolidation and simplification and not use the streamline. I think that's a, or some, that doesn't be those words, but something that, other than streamlining, because it, to me, streamlining indicates we've taken this thorough examination of looking at the process end to end, which we have not. It looks like we've, we've talked about wait times between departments, which we have not. It looks, we're looking at maybe what the long pole in the tent in the process is. We have not looked at that. So that, that to me is what streamlining kind of infers, whereas really what we're, what this does is it consolidates permits and simplifies those permits with standards and better rules. And that is a more accurate reflection of what this is. So something to that effect.
Maybe we could call it the Inflation Reduction Act.
My, my comment on that is staff was directed to do streamlining. The city council's vested in that. And if we start saying that, they're going to say, you guys didn't do your job.
Yeah, I mean, you were there at the interviews on Monday.
Yeah.
Every, every, every candidate got asked about streamlining.
And I think we just leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Cause well, my opinion is, is that um we should um do, do some looking at the process uh that's from a different angle than this, which would be a a study session, you know, assuming we all agreed and staff agreed, where we pick some couple, you know, couple architects that are doing business in the town for years and invite them in for a study session and say, how do we compare to other cities? What's good? What's bad? What would you change? What seems long and difficult and what seems good? And start chipping away at this by getting actual feedback from people who you engage in our process. And then after we did some interviews, we could look at that and then we could go to the council with a recommendation that says, we've done some review and evaluation and we'd like to actually define, have this defined work program to actually go back and look at making some changes that would enhance the user experience and hopefully cut down the time and streamline things. So I, to me, I think I, I would like to keep going on this topic, not just go, okay, done. Cause I, I, I think that there's, it doesn't look at where things sit and where departments don't talk to each other and things drag on for months and months and months. That's the real problem.
Well, I don't, I, I guess um that's something that can certainly be done. But on projects that are um compliant with code, that they've done their homework, um, I've found, I processed a couple of housing developments through the city and um it was as good as any I've been through. When you start looking for exceptions and um things like that, you've got to expect you're not going to go the same speed as if you complied with everything.
Yeah, I can, I can add to that.
Yeah, go, jump in, please.
You know, I've presented projects to multiple cities.
Your mic. There you go.
I've presented projects to multiple cities in county and state. And, you know, what I've seen in San Clemente is it's far easier to get things approved, to get through the process. And it's more reasonable. Um, and it comes from a place of experience that you get, you don't get in a lot of the cities. And it's a broad spectrum. I mean, I've done stuff from Humboldt to, you know, San Diego. San Diego's one of the worst.
What's your thoughts on that?
I mean, I, I, we could look at it. I agree that um, I think, I think we should keep the name Streamlining. Um, I, I think that there's delay in the process for people. Some of it's the people's fault, but is it really their fault if they don't really know, you know? Um, I think the plan check honestly is a problem. Outside plan checkers, you know, finding little nitpicky things so they can cause another plan check cycle and have more fees collected. Driven a generator for them, to be honest, outside plan check. But I, I think there's other opportunity to kind of try and help things get through faster. I mean, I don't know what a grading permit is running these days in terms of time, but it used to be really, really bad. Um, if you're moving more than fifty cubic yards of dirt, then you've got a grading permit that takes months and months, which.
Yeah, you're talking about stuff that we can't control as a planning commission. I think we should focus on those things, especially for the study sessions. Because we're responding to this, because we're directed to.
Yeah.
Right?
No, I understand that. But my, my point is that the. No, I understand that, but my, my point is that the frustrated applicant calls and complains to the city councilman or mayor and they don't know that it wasn't planning, it was in building plan check and it was this and that. And they also don't hear that, well, their architect did a bad job and didn't look at the Henry London's guidelines and.
Yeah, but we, we, during this interview process, I know Bart did, and I think I might have as well explained that to him. There's only so much that we can do in the planning commission to improve things. And there was at least, you know, two or three candidates where it was suggested that we do away with the design review subcommittee.
Right.
Yeah. And I think Brent had a great response is that, you know, you, you speed things up by slowing them down, which is to really scrutinize at, at, at the early level.
Yeah, upfront.
And that's where we're looking for incomplete packages and stuff like that. So by the time it gets to planning commission, it is much more complete. It's easier for us to push it through.
Well, I think the design review does more than just help applicants have a compliant package that will pass. It helps them with, improve their design to, to complement and protect this, our village feel. A lot of applicants don't understand the village concept. They don't understand our guidelines and they come in with stuff that's frankly not San Clemente. And oftentimes, hearing it from us that this, that why it's a better idea to make it look like the Spanish village feel helps them understand the benefits of changing their design so that it does complement the city and doesn't take the city away from that look and feel. That, to me, is one of the most, the biggest benefit of that design review.
We're certainly not limited to that.
Circling back to the streamlined thought, yeah, that's way sideways. We got a little sideways. But the streamlined thing.
Yep.
I, I, I agree, I agree with, with Cameron in the way of, I don't think this solves what the city council was intending it to solve. I think this makes it simpler as far as the codes and maybe makes it a little faster to interpret, but the bog down is in more places than right here. And so this could be part A of an A, B, C type streamlined process. I don't think this shuts the door on streamlining as a city council intended. Maybe they said specifically, hey, we don't want to jump through more hoops than we need to jump, but really kind of to, I, I remember Karen talking about that program so we could start tracking applications better, right? Doesn't, right, track it?
And we have, yeah, we'd like to see that.
I mean, all these things, there's more facets to streamlining. So I think we need to stay on topic here, but streamline, I don't think this is a done deal, in my opinion. If you all want to get more efficient, you know, how can we do it?
I think we've had that discussion before.
Yeah.
And what you're kind of talking about now involves a work study, like of the running of the planning department to see where it is, but I think we, we've all had that discussion a couple of meetings back. I'm ready to move.
I got a quick question for Adam and the city attorney. As far as a planning commission, we're basically working with the planning department, not necessarily all of the community development responsibilities. So can we be the lead group looking at building and engineering? I don't think so. It seems like that's, maybe we're overreaching a little bit, unless it's directed by city council.
Yeah, so I, I was going to say two things, just to put this on, on, um, on your, on your plate of options. Then I'll address that, that one second. The two things were, uh, the name of the item. For consistency with, uh, this entire process, I would say we, we would recommend we leave the title the same. However, this is an opportunity for the planning commission to forward recommendations to the city council on a number of things. And I, I think that sentiment about this not being as much streamlining as necessary to actually tackle that, all of the facets of that, of that work effort. Those recommendations could be included in, uh, what gets forwarded to the, to the city council. And so if there's a recommendation that the city council provide additional direction to look at other streamlining options, then the city council can basically figure out who, who would be best to, to look at those if, if it's not just one, maybe it, maybe it is one lead group and if the planning commission would like to offer their, their, their services as that lead group, that there's, there's no reason why that, that, that recommendation couldn't be forwarded. I will say the planning commission, uh, is in a unique situation as far as community development. You know, the planning commission serves as the transportation, uh, committee and, or the parking, uh, committee. And that, all of those projects come from engineering, which is actually outside of community development. That's in the public works department. The planning commission also serves as the appeals body for building permits. We don't really get many, I, I, as long as I've been here, I don't think I've ever seen somebody that wants to appeal a, a denied building permit, but if that were to happen, the planning commission actually would be the, the review body for that. So I, the planning commission does play a role in, in quite a few, quite a few things. In fact, the planning commission reviews projects, uh, certain projects, um, and maybe it's best to enunciate that. I believe it's buildings over fifteen hundred square feet that are on public park sites. Typically, a lot, public parks stuff is, is reviewed by beaches, parks and recreation. So the, the planning division does, or the planning commission does have a, quite a broad range of responsibility. And, and I think the discussion that you're having about the making a recommendation of the city council about further action would be, you know, a reasonable and appropriate, uh, recommendation. Just, you know, and, and staff is here if you want any help on how to craft that, but it sounds like the commission's having a good, good discussion on it.
I just wanted to add, thank you, Adam. I just wanted to add that I concur with Cameron as maybe the streamline is a misnomer, especially when we see the three hundred paper pages here. I think we all had in our, at least when I was interviewing for this position, uh, it was, uh, my goal was to look at streamlining the actual permit processes. And, but the city council directed us in a different path. I don't know if they understood what they were directing. I'm assuming they did. I'm, I'm just going to assume that they did. So that's.
I don't think they did.
So that's, that's, I'm trying to be diplomatic here. So that's where we went and that's the name that we're, we're going with. However, I do want to see track it and I know we've had a few delays and so I want to, I want to get track it back on track. That was presented to us as an opportunity to add to what we've already accomplished here. And I know that there is an engineering side or a data side, but this is something that I believe we have shared with the city council and we do need to bring that back to the table. And at some point, it would be maybe a work study that we evaluate where the pain points are in the system. And then we could address those if that's in our purview. Other than that, I think we accomplished some of the, the pain points here tonight and solved the problems. I'm, I'm happy that we addressed Larry's concerns. I, I hope he is also satisfied. I'm sure we're here if, if he's not. But I think we took in consideration our Spanish village by the sea and all that it means to us.
Okay, um, any other comments or questions? I'd like to briefly discuss story polls, uh, which is on section D seven. I brought it up before, but there was a number of people that weren't here. Just fundamentally as a backdrop, I don't see a lot of value in story polls and certainly not excessively, um, complicated ones. I think it's hard for people to understand and interpret what they are and what they mean. So I don't like, I don't like where the city can require the, an applicant to do story polls and, like I said, complicated ones. I know that there was some revision to this language, I think. Is that accurate and stuff?
On the screen. The comments that we got were not to change the situation. Story polls would be required, but more to clarify and simplify how the installations are done. Lines like over the, the outer footprint of the building.
Okay, um, on, on page D seven on E one, it says, story polls, at a minimum, story poll staking is required for the construction expansion of structures with the potential to affect public view corridors from public places in the coastal overlay zones. Can we say it may, may be required? And that way it'll give some flexibility and discretion to the, to the city staff as to when it's applicable and when it's not applicable?
Yeah, the, the planning commission can make that recommendation. I'm just wondering if there are any potential impacts to that type of change. It would. Nothing, nothing for Secua, nothing for the local coastal program.
But it says supplemental information may include, but not be limited to visual analysis tools such as story polls.
Staking, photo simulations. So it doesn't have to be story polls already.
Right, but down in E, down in E one, it says, at a minimum, story poll staking is required in these circumstances.
But that's a subsection.
I understand, in that, in that circumstance.
Well, I think in all circumstances, because you're saying in E that it may be required. So if it's determined that that is the course that's being required, then this is the criteria for that.
I, I think you're right. Staking if required is the correct way to do it, rather than is.
Well, then it say, say, staking if required or staking, or when required, blah, blah, blah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So.
One thing we would want to clarify is, uh, who would determine when it's required?
City planner.
Says her right at the beginning of section E.
And then.
Or review authority.
And planning commission could actually ratify that, that recommendation.
Did I say that at discretion of the city planner?
Yes.
Or review authority.
Public view corridors aren't, you know, let's throw, I mean, it's not every time you're going to have a building. It's, if it's going to impact one of our defined in the general plan view corridors, like it's right there, that's limited to just those areas.
I understand.
I just don't like is. Is is so definitive.
Yeah, exactly. I, I'd be, I'd be happy with maybe or when required.
When's a good word.
But is.
Item one, staking when required, sure.
When's a good word.
I don't argue with that.
Christopher, does that still retain the?
So I, in, in any motion, I'd love to hear that that, that word has changed from is to when.
We're talking about E one, right?
Right.
Okay, so. I would, after story poll staking.
Okay.
You could just say, yeah, you could just say story poll staking when required and take that second sentence out.
After that?
Yeah. Then jump to.
So what are you proposing?
Take out the second sentence, which says specific projects that require story polls taking, to say story poll staking when required.
For the construction of?
That would still require it at, at some minimum point.
Yeah, it was already determined in E that they're required. That's where the discretion to require the story polls. So that's why the, the, under one, the subsection, story poll staking when requested or when required.
Yeah, when required.
It's not.
When's good.
But so, so it, in E supplemental information, that's just saying there may be additional information that's required. One of those things may be story polls. One says story polls are absolutely required in this particular, these particular situations. Are we trying to say that one does not absolutely require story poll staking?
Yes, it gives some flexibility and discretion to the city planner.
So then we'd want to say something like story poll staking when required. And strike the second sentence, get, probably get rid of at minimum, because there, the minimum would be it's not required.
Right.
So it would say something to the effect of story poll staking may be required for the construction or extension, expansion.
Perfect.
When, not may.
I, I think.
Do you want may rather than when?
Well, it may be required.
It may be. I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think one, one E is trying to do too much. Some of it should be just up at the top.
Yeah.
When it talks about, um, the, the expansion of structures with the potential to affect public view corridors from public places, that should be at the top. And then it should say, it, you know, will be, um, supplement, supplement information may then be required, which would be, but not limited to the story poll stalking, staking or photo simulations and models. I can, I feel like what it's trying to say is if you're in a public space and you're going to do construction in a view corridor, you may be asked to do one of these things. And so to clean it up, I think you just move that notion that if you're in a, going to construct in a public view corridor, you may be asked to do this and it could be one of the, one, any one of these things.
Well, yeah, I just, I, I think that there's added emphasis on view corridors in the coastal zone, but I, I think that it is like a subsection. You could have a project like. Uh huh. That has nothing to do with the view corridor, but it just.
Yeah, sure.
And they want visual tools to understand how big it is. Or use sim. So, um, I think you almost don't even need E one. I'm going to say it's maybe required, then. But actually, at the beginning of E, there's added emphasis on.
And public view corridors.
Tools for these.
Yeah.
Situation.
Yeah. Or you could put, you could, you could retitle E one to say like areas of special concern and then just say, you know, these conditions are where special added visual tools may be, may be required.
Yeah, then you could just get rid of the first one, two, three. Not all of sentence three. Sentence three is a run-on sentence anyway. Like get rid of the first part of that third sentence. And just focus, like you said, on things that affect, potential to affect public view corridors.
May, may require added enhanced visual aids or whatever. But it's all at the discretion of the city planner or review authority instead of a shell, you must do it.
I think, I mean, the only argument I would make is if you're going to do construction and you are in a public view corridor and there, I think there's what, three or four of them in the city.
Oh, there's a lot more.
There's more.
Oh, there's more than that?
Yeah.
Okay. That, to me, should trigger, you need to do something to, you know, show that what it's going to do. that what it's going to do. And then the rest should be up to the city planner, you know?
Well, I think we just say, you know, "Areas of special concern related to visual aids are construction and expansion of structures in public view corridors, in the coastal overlay zone, and in the architectural overlay zone," or something. Just identify them as, hey, you know, "Hey, applicant, beware. If you're in one of these areas, you have more likelihood to get hit." And it also is a cue to staff, like, "Oh, yeah, they're in one of those zones. We really need to watch what we're doing here."
Yep. So how do we change this?
So I...
We're all good. I could make a motion.
Yeah, since we're... If you're comfortable giving staff direction to make this a potential, but not a requirement, we can massage the wording to make this work. One of the things that I think should probably be clarified is all of the numbered items underneath subsection E are about story polls. And so there needs to be something that sets that topic up. You know, I could see that getting rid of number one would work. All the, you know, the information that there, you may still need to do story poll staking is still there, but to then start with story poll exemption for time extensions, it doesn't flow very well. So I think there should be something where we do talk about certain potential, the heightened, the areas of heightened concern.
Well, you could put two down below three. Three is more of an introduction-type thing. So if you, let's say you struck one and you made three number one, and then two stayed number two. That makes it a little bit more logical.
Okay.
Just maybe move parts of number one that talks about where we're concerned into the top paragraph.
Into the header.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And I'm comfortable with giving staff the authority to... You guys have the direction, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be okay with... I have a good sense of what the commission is looking for, and if you give us the authority to work on this before it goes to city council, that's great. I'd rather not have to come back to Planning Commission just for that one item. However, if you still would like to see something, maybe at a design review subcommittee, we run some language by you. And if we get the design review subcommittees okay on it?
Or we can just go to the city council and public comments.
It's always an option. I think we've got a good sense of what needs to be done. I just want to make sure that the whole, this whole section just reads cohesively.
Yeah.
But we can amend this. Well, we can change this proposed amendment to indicate that nowhere is story poll staking absolutely required, but there are some areas of heightened concern where it's more likely you'll be asked.
Just a question. Do you think it's necessary or would be prudent where we say photo simulations, that they be certified that their heights and all are correct? We've had that come up in the past.
You know, I don't see any harm in doing that. When we do get photo simulations, staff's general approach is to include those records, include that information as part of the record.
Mm-hmm.
However, the mechanism for ensuring, like, you know, compliance with the stated height would be that after the project gets built, if it doesn't resemble the photo simulation that they provided, our recourse would be to go call their entitlements back up. Whereas I think we'd be a little bit better off if we codified some requirement to have an engineer or somebody actually certify those documents.
Yeah, because I think we've done that.
Well, it's a little late after it's finished. You're talking about once it's framed at most.
Yeah, we've had it, I think, where they had the photo simulation company certify that the ridge was at the height they claimed it was, because they knew where the grade was on the lot. They went up there 35 feet, and they confirmed it with their application that they used to generate the simulation. So I think it can be done, but just keep that in mind.
The certification that's listed here for the story polls is really good.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it would be good to have something similar for others, because the staff, while staff would typically require that, having things written in the code so that it's clear to everybody, even applicants, as the commission has said, so applicants know what the code process is and that they will be required to certify those types of documents, I think would be great. And staff can add that language in as well.
When you say "certified," I mean, would it just be stamped by a licensed architect or engineer? Is that sufficient certification?
Yeah. Somebody's taking responsibility for it.
Yeah.
Because in there, they're taking it serious.
Well, yeah, but I think this is kind of overkill over here, where it says, "Well, nobody who's related to the..." Like, they're going to risk their license for stamping something? I mean, that's...
We do it all the time.
Yeah, we're required to do it.
Would you risk your license to put up something bogus? I'm sure you wouldn't.
No, no.
Well...
That's why you don't, you're pretty sure that they're going to do it right.
Exactly. So I'm not sure we'd need to have all this other stuff, or whatever. No, yeah, I'm just saying. I'm ready to vote on this thing. I'm open to a motion.
I've been ready. All right. I will move the staff recommendations. One, determined amendments are not subject to CEQA because they do not constitute a project as defined by the state CEQA guidelines. And number two, we adopt Resolution PC 23-003 recommending the city council adopt zoning amendment 22-3666, zoning permit streamlining, with direction to staff to expand the decision flow, to include the cultural heritage and DRSC. Two, that we are recommending to the city council that they delegate to the Planning Commission, Appeal Authority of Zoning Administrative Decisions, and we lower the appeal fee to $100. Three, in Table 17.16.10, the cultural heritage permit on page D 58, we add to Item C-2 that it complies with zoning. And then for the delegate to staff, the request to reword the story poll section to reflect our conversation.
E, yes.
Section E.
Section E.
Christopher?
And there's...
Is there anything else you want into motion?
There's another item. You want me to... Other items on page D nine, there is a request to say, or a cultural heritage subcommittee.
That was the first.
That was the first one I mentioned, that you expand the decision flow.
Okay, sorry.
On D nine, yeah.
Sorry. Thank you.
Do you think that reflects everything that everybody's been saying tonight?
What's other one?
Okay. Bart, did I get everything?
I believe so.
Karen, are you good?
I'm good.
Yeah, you got that one.
Eileen thinks she has one.
You got that one.
What's up, Eileen? Yeah, you mentioned that.
Yes, that was on 58, I think.
58, yeah.
17.16.110.
Yeah. I said it really fast. Want me to repeat it again?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
Oh, Gary Beattie.
Whoever.
He did. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Christopher has a smile on his face.
Six months of your life finally comes to an end.
So you're going to be in charge of the coastal as well?
I'm working on that, yeah.
When do you think we're going to get that?
I can't see this is like, this coastal program will be like six of these.
Be like the general plan.
I think I'm going to be in Europe.
I can't wait.
Okay. Moving on. Nine new business, no new business, no old business.
I got a new business.
Oh, you do?
Yep. I just want to congratulate Gary and Cameron on going for a bid at the city council and myself, just to show that we've got some qualified people here, and also congratulations to being reappointed.
To you, too.
And Mr. Brown.
What about this guy?
Yeah.
Come over here.
Yeah.
I said, "You, too."
But most of all, I was thinking that after the interviews and all, and this is because we've been sitting in front of too many ties for the last two weeks, but I had a thought, and I don't know how we would do it, to make a request to city council that they welcome a member of the Planning Commission on, to be in attendance when one of our projects has been moved up to their review, more than just as a public speaker, but to be able to field questions on it. And I don't know, we'd have to get their permission first, I think, to do it. And I don't know when in the process that would occur on their agenda, unless it was, it wouldn't be public comments, probably during the staff report. It could be.
Is this a recommendation for a new process or a new part of the procedure for city council to review?
We used to have, every month, Don Brown would go and update city council on what was going on.
Thank you, Chris.
What we'd been doing. But when we have something like this one, I'd love to see us appoint someone from the commission to make themselves available to council, since they don't have time to review this, and just be able to field questions on it, representing the Planning Commission. It wouldn't be the same person on every project. One reason is it introduces each member of the commission to city council, so they know the face, they know what you do, and that you're passionate and qualified to do it.
Yeah.
And do we do it with a letter or... And if everybody even considers, that would be interesting. I know there's people who are passionate on different subjects, and they'd probably be appointed on the ones they're passionate about. And it would, I think, assist city council big time, since they don't have the time to review something like we just reviewed.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, please.
So I understand the request. I think it's good. Playing devil's advocate, what if they start asking questions kind of out of left field and it kind of stumps?
That's okay. That's fine. We didn't get to that. We didn't consider. No, that's absolutely fine. And they probably would. But, you know, we'll be careful that the person's, because it should be just based on, just say, "That wasn't something that was discussed."
Yeah, yeah. We could just give a debrief.
You know, the whole idea is just a debrief, what happened here, because we have such limited, I shouldn't use that word, our minutes of the meetings aren't documenting every single word that was spoken in the meeting, and they don't have time to listen to the tapes or watch the videos. And they may have the same questions we asked, and the person would just respond to say, "That was discussed," and...
I wish we would have the opportunity in memorial care and things like that.
That's kind of what helped, that kind of what triggered this thought. So think about it, and I'd like to see maybe that discussed or agendized, that we could talk about a process to do that.
Yes, let me do some research, and if I can put together some options, I can put an agenda item on the next meeting.
And I mean, I find, if you run across the mayor in the hallway, ask him, you know, that's just... I know, I was hoping that he would stay and we could bring that up, but...
Oh, he was there, then?
Yeah, he was sitting in the back. But anyway, then I think it would be good for everyone to be able to converse with council directly, so they know a face, they know a name.
And then it'll build confidence in us as a...
A body.
Form, right? Yeah, a body. Because right now, I think they, anyway, whatever, but...
They don't know us from Adam.
They don't know Jack.
No. And they do know us from Adam.
Yeah.
I didn't say it. I didn't say it. My mind is all...
Okay. Any reports of commissioners and staff?
I do have a couple of things. They're brief. I'll make them as brief as possible. The next meeting, there will be a study session on historic preservation, specifically to look at the standard, excuse me, the standards for the rehabilitation, according to the Secretary of the Interior. And we will have food provided for that, so it'll start at five o'clock, so be aware of that.
What's the date on that one?
2/41.
Thank you. Let's see. Also on the next agenda, there will be the selection of the chair, vice chair, chair pro tem, and the design review subcommittee, because that happens at a meeting soon following the appointment of new members. And then the last item is just a reminder for absences. With the summer upon us, I just want to make sure that if anybody has any extended absences, there are procedures required, especially when there's a chance of three consecutive regular meetings being missed. According to municipal code, any member of the Planning Commission who is absent from three consecutive regular meetings of the Planning Commission without furnishing to the city clerk a certificate of illness from a duly practicing physician or without the authorization of the Planning Commission to be absent from three consecutive meetings for good cause shall, as a result, surrender his or her office on the Planning Commission. So if you're going to get to the point where there's potentially three meetings due to a long vacation, it's not planning staff that you need to get the okay from. It's going to be the Planning Commission, and that should be done at a Planning Commission meeting. So think ahead of time. And if there's any questions, please reach out to me.
That'd be a six-week vacation. I wish I could have one of those.
Well, it could be a four-week and a day. I mean, if they lined up, boom, boom, boom. If they felt just wrong.
We'll just postpone the meeting.
There you go. Okay. I move that we adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission Wednesday, June 21st, with a study session at 5:00 p.m. and a regular commission meeting at 6:00 p.m. in city hall council chambers.
Hold a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Close.
Steve, go ahead.